I have a call the meeting to order for July fifteenth. Six, six thirty. That roll call please.
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Bridge?
Present.
Mayor Potem Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor James Mosby?
Present. So please stand, joining Chaplain Nelson, are we, who's up today? All right.
The Ron Show again.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, guys, would you kind of look at each other for a minute and give a smile? I mean, I feel like I walked in a dogfight where I'm the only cat. Would you guys just kind of look at each other for a minute, smile, say we're glad we're here? Would you do that for me? I feel more comfortable. Thank you. Well, Father, I'm so thankful for our city. And I'm grateful, Lord, to be able to live in Lompoc. Lord, we ask that you would bless our citizens. We thank you for blessing our leaders here. You're a God that never will forsake us. You're our great shepherd. And we trust and depend on you at good times. And when these times of troubles and distress come, we ask for your divine counsel. So tonight, Lord, we ask for special favor to guide our hearts and minds and spirits in a unity of peace and divine wisdom. I want to thank you for your kindness, Lord, toward us. I want to thank you for our leaders. I appreciate, Father, the Honorable Mayor James Mosby, our city council members, Dirk Starbuck, Victor Vega, and Jeremy Ball, and Steve Bridge. Thank you for our city clerk, Stacy, and all the wonderful staff here that makes this meeting possible with all the information. I want to give special thanks, Lord, to our city manager as well, and all our city staff. And I ask for special grace to be upon our Lompoc Police Department, Fire Department. I want to thank you for the leadership of Chief Martin and Far, Chief Fallon, Father. Lord, I ask that you would bless us tonight. Because we come in this room tonight as complex human beings, carrying burdens, carrying even joy, hope, it's just a myriad of emotions. And we're trusting that you alone will hold us together, oh God, in your love and peace. Help us, Lord, as we do the business of our city. And we ask for your favor, and in your name, amen.
Let's join in the pleas of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, the which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Ron. Presentation. You knew you were up already, huh?
Yeah, I saw it.
John McMurray of Colas LLC provide presentation of city electric grid model development. At all.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name's John McMurray, and I have Corey Sandman here with me. And we're going to be talking about the electric model that we've been working on for the city of Lompoc. So just a quick introduction, I've been, we're going to cover an introduction in this order right here, the electric model. What is the electric model? The purpose? Why is it needed? And how does it work? And what are the benefits of the model? So again, I'm John McMurray, Corey Sandman. I've been in the electric utility business for 38 years. I've worked as an engineer mostly, distribution, that's the electrical grid, also in management. And we've been focused here with a few tasks for the city of Lompoc. We were hired to come in and help out. Corey?
Hi, everyone. Corey Sandman here. Fifteen years of experience in distribution planning, reliability, resiliency, storm hardening has been my area expertise.
Okay, so what is the electric model? Here's a snapshot of the electric model. We've been working on this probably pretty hard for the last two months. It's taking a geospatial set of data and then pulling it into the electric grid model. It's a simulation essentially of all the data set. And that's the wires, the cables, the transformers, the switches, the fuses, and other pieces of equipment. On a system like this, there might be maybe a couple hundred thousand pieces of equipment out there. And what this does is it ties it all together, and it looks at it, and allows us to do analysis on it. So the purpose and why it's needed, like I said, it's used to simulate the electric distribution system. It helps us understand the grid operating conditions, and it helps us to plan for the future. It indicates real-time problems, but also, as we look into the future, we're able to see those issues year by year. We're going to be creating models for the future years. And so current state, future state, again, it's the electric equipment, it's the conductors, it's the loading of it. There's a number, maybe 20 functions that we'll be looking at on the grid. These are some of the more common ones, the loading, how well-loaded is the system? Is it overloaded in certain pocket areas? Is there high voltage, low voltage? A number of other things in order to build, make sure that the system is operating like it should be. And we'll be evaluating reliability, resiliency also. And we've already been taking a look at all that. Corey, I'll let you talk about the model.
Okay. So on your screen, you can see just a kind of a sample of what the value model, so as with any model, you can, you get the opportunity to simulate, understand some conditions may not be present right now, but could be present in the future, or you already experienced it, where you're trying to figure out what happened. So what the model offers us is that we can evaluate your system and do scenarios for improvement prior to actually putting any feet on the ground or any construction to make sure that the decision made for the best upgrade possible was already determined before we've done the investment. So what you can see on your screen right here is some scenarios that you can identify, areas, voltage issues, phasing issues, equipment overloads that you can identify. One of the benefits, like John is saying, is simulations. If there's an overloaded transformer, what you do is you go, you replace it with the next size bigger. But maybe in three years, you've got to replace that transformer again. So the purpose of the model is to evaluate your forecast to see if maybe the next size isn't really what you wanted to install, you need to go even bigger.
So some of the benefits are creating the forecast, and that's what we've been hired for, is to look two years out and create a plan, six years out, and 20 years out. And we're tying this in with the California Air Resource Board also. By 2030, according to California Air Resource Board, the latest guidelines they're there is that all water heaters and all space heaters will need, brand-new will be electric. And by 2035, the electric, all brand-new vehicles will be electric. Does that mean everybody's going to convert over in those years all at once? No. It's going to be a very gradual conversion, and that's what we're going to do, is look at a saturation study to see the impacts of that. And we'll have a few various varieties of models that have faster and slower growth rates in those areas. Second bullet point, we're going to analyze specific loads. Now, requests are coming in to the electric utility every so often, and they're asking, can we install this? Can we bring this load on? And this tool's going to help facilitate the analysis of that, and what could be done in maybe, you know, an analysis for solar panels might take a day and a half of calculations, this can do in a few minutes because it's all built into the model. And so these are just some examples here. Walmart has, I believe, 800 KW of solar panels they want to install. There's a linear generator that also is interested in connecting to the grid. There's Burton Ranch. There's multifamily home units, and I'm probably not going to say it right, Bodger, Bodger subdivisions, is that right? Okay. And then, you know, we'll be looking to balance loads on the grid to reduce system losses. There are a number of other features that we'll be running, optimizing the grid too. So we'll view these scenarios to pinpoint issues, to plan improvements. And if you can imagine, we'll be sprinkling the loads on based on where we're known, and also future estimations of where we think some loads will be coming. And then, like I said, a gradual conversion, and it won't be over two or three years, it might be over 15 or 20 years. And people are not going to be buying electric vehicles in 2035, you know, all, they're not going to convert there, they're not going to convert in five years. There are going to be a number of vehicles that buy, a number of people who buy used vehicles. Like my wife and I have bought used, many used vehicles through the years, and probably many of you have too. So it's not going to impact the grid all at once, but gradually. I think that's about it for us. Do we have any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Ball?
Yeah, just real quick, just because you put it up there, pique my curiosity, but we don't really push solar in Lompoc, and there's Walmart solar thing. What's, do you have any more information about that? Or what's the Walmart solar ask?
Eight hundred KW is what they want to connect to the grid. And our model, we're developing the model, it's actually, the model is running right now, but we've got to do some tweaks, and we're connecting a few things here. But the ask is, can we connect, Walmart's saying, can we connect to the grid? And there are going to be impacts, you know, there's inverters, and there's harmonics, there's different things we're going to be looking at through the model to make sure that it, you know, if it impacts the grid in a way that's not normal, we'll ask that they put in, maybe it's filters, or this, or that, whatever it will be.
Do you think it'd be a net negative or a net positive for the utility?
I think environmentally, solar is a great thing. Financially, that's between, everybody has to do their own calculations. Residential doesn't make as much sense as maybe a large-scale commercial. Is it a good thing for the utility to have solar? It's a source of generation while it's available for a few hours, you know, a certain period of the day. So there are benefits to the grid, to be able to have extra source of energy, you know. Right now, we have essentially in the city of Lompoc, one source of energy coming from PG&E, and then a number of smaller generators on the system, very small.
And I'll follow up with staff, because I'd just be curious, is their bill going to go up or down? And is that going to impact all the other users on our local grid?
It's a very small amount of solar, you know, you're talking 800 KW, and when it's running, maybe they'll hit 400 KW or 500 KW. So probably less, the peak load is around 22 megawatts. This is less than a half a megawatt. So it's a very small impact, but it does impact the grid in the local area. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, if your target is like increasing your renewable portfolio, it's very beneficial to do it in one place.
Sure.
And not so many residential customers. So even though it might be a large unit, because Walmart is already a big load, it's not a community solar off by a SURF substation or something like that that you have to feed, it'll kind of help you by having one point that already has a large load.
Sure.
And you won't have to do so much upgrades compared to like having 800 KW of residential would require transformer upgrades.
Yeah. And again, I fully support solar. I think it's amazing. I think it's, we should benefit from the sun. I do know some people would be pretty peeved, knowing that they wanted to have their solar for 10, 20 years, and all of a sudden, you know. Anyway, that's another story. The only other question I had is, generally speaking, I've been up here for five years, Lompoc's becoming known for being pretty resilient. When we do have outages, we tend to tackle them pretty quickly. So I just wanted to get a little bit more, what's the nuance of our resiliency, or the losses?
Right.
On the surface, we seem to do pretty well, but I know we're behind in some.
Yeah. So the losses, I'll talk about resiliency and losses. So losses mean in terms of balancing the load, it's kind of like, the analogy I'll make is running down the road with your tires at 20 PSI instead of 42 is maybe what your spec at. So you're basically getting worse gas mileage, the grid is losing energy to maybe not being configured properly, having phases out of balance. And so on the electric grid, there's an A, B, and C phase, and if they're out of balance, you start losing energy. And if you balance them, you can reduce those losses, and our model will look at that. We've also, the linemen have been helping out, and the estimator, Dave Compo, has been helping out, Jason Grossberg, I mean, all under the management of Mike Luther and the team, they've been working with us very well. They've been taking field notes and bringing it back so we can get current status of the grid. So that's the loss part, the resiliency. There are not a lot of outages here. There are outages, but there are not a ton of them, but there's some long outages. And the model can help determine and pinpoint when those outages occur. It's what are the optimal switching points to restore power quicker. I know there was a cable, a long cable outage in the history we're looking at. There are also, you know, there are always the possibility of a windstorm, a smaller windstorm, and also firestorm, is being ready for firestorms. Should something happen, you need to have a backup plan, and how do you move the grid around? How do you bring it down? How do you bring it back up? So those are some of the things that we have experience in, and we'll be looking at.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, like just to kind of overall answer the question, without a model, you have to do a lot of things manually. You have to, you essentially operate the switch and see what happens. With a model, you can do more switch scenarios before you have to switch. You can, you can understand, can I do it beforehand, you know, so that you're aware which switches you can do which things for. As well with generation, you might have one location that has generation, big one, but if you want to answer the question as to what would happen if you had more solar in multiple locations, you can now simulate that systematically without having to manually calculate each location and try and figure it out, which is historically what they've done.
So potentially, a model could save us money because we're not guessing so much.
And it will help you understand and define why your standards are the way they should be.
Awesome. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Bridge?
So the model that we've put in place is that, is that model now ours, and our utility department will update it and maintain it?
That's right. That's right. It's, you are, you're, the team here is already updating the basis of model.
Okay.
It comes from a geospatial system, GIS. And when that gets updated, it just has to be reloaded. And probably once a year, once to twice a year is, on this size system is adequate.
When you say uploaded, do you mean the background software?
The planning analytical software, yeah. And it's a-
Because of updates you've done?
Yeah. And we also have loaded the software here on two machines, two computers, so that we just had a training session with two employees today, so that we're going to teach them, we want the staff to become self-sufficient, independent, and we'll support, is, our job is to teach and be able to provide information and provide technology, you know, at the lowest cost possible, so that the staff can take over if they have the capacity. It's as much, I told Mike Luther, it's as much as you, you want us to be here, or as much as you want us to back off, we're throttle up or down. We're here to serve the city.
Is the software yours, or is the software a third-party software?
So it's subscription-based. We have our own version, the city of Lompoc has their own version.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, at least North American software. Sorry. There's over, there's over 200 utilities in the United States and Canada that use the software. It's a very popular software.
And I don't know if this is a question for you or for maybe Mike. We've had a lot of conversations about Air Force resiliency and working together. Does any of our electric fall in that kind of bucket?
So I know already we're supporting Space Force Base with linemen when they have emergencies. Sometimes I know there's some kind of agreement that I've heard that we, the city of Lompoc sends linemen that way, and they appreciate that. We met with Vandenberg Space Force Base Electrical Engineer and the team there with Converge Strategies, which is a consultant also. They're working with Vandenberg, but they're also working through the city. So we've met, and we've collaborated on potential opportunities to save money for both parties. And there's some opportunities to be able to extend the grid, connect the grid. There's been some discussion about even the city of Lompoc possibly picking up the prison load somewhere off in the future. So we'll run different scenarios on the models of picking this load up and seeing what it does. And we'll have those various scenarios, like I mentioned, to-
So your slide where you listed kind of like the main points, was that just a representative slide? Because, for example, I didn't see the Air Force on there, and I didn't see Bodger, the Bodger Development on there.
Right, I didn't put that on there, yeah. I was just, yeah, there's, I said other loads there. I know there's another 86-unit subdivision that's not on there.
But it's in the model.
There, yeah, there are 14 pages of new loads, and just put up the top four or five, that's all.
Fair enough. I just wanted to make sure.
But we are going to load all of them in there.
Okay. And then-
Yeah, I'm sorry. We do have the list from you guys of the development team of all the ones, so we're going to use that list that John's saying, the 16 pages. They have expected commission date for all those, so we're going to use the dates, and we're going to create annual models to determine as your, as these developments get built, what the change is for every year. So that's, that's how we'll build out our short-term, long-term plan.
Okay. And then, the last one, you've probably addressed this, but at least as you're walking around town, you hear that our transformers, particularly like in Old Town, are in need of update? And we'll get those answers out of the model?
Well, the model doesn't calibrate against age, it just looks at loading essentially as electrical flow. So in terms of age of the transformers, cable, wire, as long as that's loaded into the model, we can run, and I don't know if the model includes that, that's something normally, I don't know, the age of the transformers, we'll have to look at the data set. It's typically a load flow. But, but if we do have the age of the equipment when we run the reliability analysis, then we can identify pockets of aged, old areas, old transformers, old cable, old wire. But I think the employees generally know that pretty well, but this will also be just another tool, new toolbox to help.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a industry practice of using Iowa survivor curves. So what Iowa survivor curves are, is they essentially put a curve about age versus loading. So less loaded it is, even though it's older, it's still healthier than if it's overloaded for a shorter period of time. So when you do life cycle assessments, you account for both, the loading, and you propagate that with the aging of the, of the infrastructure. So that's a trick. And I believe you do collect that information, it's just in GIS, the age.
Okay. Those were my questions. Thank you.
So why now? Is it anticipating future massive growth, or, why now? And are you anticipating things that happen at the federal level of changing your model?
So you say, why now?
Why now? Why are you doing this now?
Why now? So we've been hired to do this now, and this is what we're looking at. Why, why are we looking at this? Because we want to be able to answer the questions that the staff has, that the outside sources come, brand-new subdivisions, the solar panels, inverters, different things are happening on the grid. And maybe in the past, some of the answers were, sorry, you can't connect it to the grid right now until we know more. So this will give us more analytical data to say, yes, you can, but these are the things that you need to do, or yes, you can, there's nothing you need to do, go ahead and connect. So why now? There also is an interest from Vandenberg. They want the model also. They've asked for, can we share information with them about the model? And is there an opportunity for us to partner and, you know, be able to, you know, there's been a discussion about building a new substation close to the prison, solar farm, close to prison. There's a lot of what-if scenarios, and with the electrical model, this helps us answer those things a lot better.
The reason why I ask that, because I know staff had done a lot of this modeling before in the past, because they, they kind of knew what was floating. So I'm just curious as to why we outsourced a model, but you answered a significant.
Yeah. So it, there was, I understand there was a model here about seven years ago, but I don't know how deep they went with it, number one. Number two is this model has purpose beyond just the city of Lompoc now, it's now reaching out to Vandenberg to be able to share information, so that there may be some mutual sharing of economies of scale of things, that if there's something we need here in the city of Lompoc, they may be able to help out in the pricing and contribution in some kind of capacity.
Again, at the federal level, with things changing, with mandated electrification, maybe some of it going away, how does this tweak your model? Are you able to?
Yeah, we'll run several scenarios, and we can adjust to the scenarios. We can go up or down with scenarios. And typically, you won't take action on something that's out 10 years, but you need to have a 10-year model. All the larger utilities, like PG&E, SCE, other utilities around the nation, is they have a 10-year plan, because they have to provide that information for power plants, you know, five years out for substations, transmission lines, five to 10 years, and then power plants 10 years out. And so that data is what they're using. Right now, they're just estimating at a state level of what they think the Lompoc, I think there's some feed that Jennifer Main has provided them, but we'll have a little bit more definitive information.
And then my next question is, maybe staff can fill me in, or maybe you have it too, but how much is this costing?
Yeah. So I think the subscription is $30,000. And you're talking about what the grid is somewhere valued, I don't know, 60 to 80 million dollars. It's on that kind of scale of maintaining your vehicle, the electric grid being the vehicle, it's like getting an oil change or something, a little bit more changing filters, doing your maintenance on it.
So how much is your primary, primary model that you're putting together, how much is this costing the last couple of months of work you've been doing?
So I'm going to guess somewhere 7, 8, $9,000 probably for us to build it, and then 30,000 for the subscription, and then the utility itself can take over with a little bit of help from us. If you talk about a larger utility, we've done work for Detroit, Florida Power Line, Georgia Power, is, they spend, you know, their scale is much larger, tens of millions of dollars they spend on their systems, and millions of dollars on the model.
The city manager can answer, and did this, was this funded out of the electric enterprise, or is this grant funded from something?
I'd have to check, but I'm pretty sure it came out of electric.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Ball, you still?
Yeah, just real quick, and this might be more towards staff, thank you for the numbers. Sounds like actually a really good deal considering that.
Yeah.
Let me clarify real quick, just to make sure, do we have an electric director right now? Do we have an electric director, director of electric right now?
Yes, Mike Luther is electric director, or utility director.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And again, are you, forgive me if I'm wrong, are you interim right now? Is that correct?
No, I am the utility director.
You are the utility director. So just, just so we point out, we, we used to have an electric director, we don't have that anymore. So the buck stops at your desk for all this, right?
We had a manager.
Okay. We had electric manager, not director.
Okay. Is it, are we, are we spending less or more on our, our management for electric than we were a couple of years ago?
Electric manager's quite a bit more than the consulting professional services.
So it's cheaper to maybe look at a consultant?
Yeah, I think so now, as I'll think that they're also able to focus in more on what we need to be analyzed as well.
And you'd find the electric manager didn't just do one study though, so, yeah. All right, thank you, guys.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are we going to be able to see that 14 pages of projects as well, to the, somebody?
I can email it, Emily, and she can send it to you.
Okay. All right? You good? Thank you, guys. Came from Florida, right?
Ontario.
Okay. You like our air conditioner out here, don't you?
Yes, I like it here. Beautiful.
All right, city manager report, y'all been waiting for this one, right?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Just going to highlight some of the activities that are going on, the Lompoc Public Library's Charlotte's Web Bookmobile. We'll be at Ryan Park doing books and bubbles at Ryan Park. These events are free for Storytime, they've started last Friday. We'll have them also July 18th, the 25th, and August 1st. They start at 10:30 after the 30-minute story. They'll also have some activities for the kids, so something for them to do this summer. Pleased to share that the Parks and Rec, in partnership with the Community Development Block Grant- Block Grant, CDBG program, is again offering scholarships for youth and seniors. It's up to a hundred dollars per person for registration program. And they need to be used by December thirty-first. And that's a way that we can eliminate those financial barriers and get people to help participate in those events. Also wanna remind everybody that we'll be doing the Old Town Market. We'll be kicking that off with the annual cruise this Friday, the eighteenth, and we'll be going through the eighth. Just wanna remind everybody that we'll be having closures on H and Ocean from twelve PM to nine PM. Also wanna remind everybody, or let everybody know, that we'll be having closures Friday eighteenth here at the Treasury Department. We'll be doing a system upgrade. And we will not be able to take payments for that period from ten AM to twelve, I'll say it again. We appreciate everybody's patience and understanding. We apologize for the inconvenience. Also wanna let everybody know, we have some construction work happening on Laurel and Seventh. They have a temporary light there, so expect delays. Wanted to give the results to the council on our firework enforcement. We had citations on the ground, nine, and potentially fifteen in the aerials. So hopefully when those planes go out next year, it'll curb things a little bit, I hope. I was just gonna turn it over to Kristi. I wanted to do this one, but I'm gonna let her take the thunder on this one.
Thank you, Dean. So we've got some great news coming out of CalPERS yesterday. They announced a preliminary net investment return of eleven point six percent for the twelve-month period ending June thirtieth, 2025. This beat the fund's discount rate of six point eight percent. But, so that's an increase of four point eight percent over their discount rate. This is going to positively impact our UAL required payments in coming years, and it's, it's really good news for us.
Thank you, thank you, Kristi. Finally, I wanted to give an update on homeless encampments in the riverbed. If you can go to the next slide, we'll go over some of the phases we've done already. In March and April, we did phase one and two. On the next slide, we'll be doing in May and June. We did phases three and four, about thirty overall, about nine went into programs. And we will be concentrating on phase five in August and maybe into September. And hopefully we'll get all the encampments out. I'm gonna play a video if I could, so you can see what those phases look like from one through four. And right now, we're east of the Robinson Bridge. And we'll turn around and we'll go through the river, and you can see the encampments are cleaned up and gone. And this would be phase one. And as we pass over the Robinson Bridge, you'll see we're in phase two. And this segment would be three and four. You'll also see our construction at the campground there. And as we get into zone five, you'll see some containers that are out there getting prepared for that next phase. And if we were to continue on, that would be phase five, and that's what we'll work on next. There's, there's three encampment areas, probably nine, ten people, maybe more, that are hidden in different areas. But we'll be doing outreach and tack on that next. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Let me congratulate you, and I know it wasn't just you, but I know yourself, we had a lot of people helping in the county, Long Poak PD, sheriff, the sheriff team, Good Samaritan, City Net, the whole gamut of people. And the really good thing this time is we didn't spend eight hundred thousand dollars from the water department, correct?
Yeah, we've been pretty frugal. And I, I wanna thank the county and everybody, like you just mentioned, for their support in helping us challenge these challenges. It's good to see, it's good to see how clean that riverbed and we've got this far, and we're hopefully gonna stay on top of this.
No, we will keep the zero tolerance component moving. We were down the other day watching at the backside of the park, and I know it must be nice for fire, too, have a lot less fires down. Oh, there he goes. We're supposed to be outside, huh? The launch is happening right now, you hear? So thank you guys for, for working on that. Getting to the, Kristi Donnelly, too. What was that loss we had a couple of years ago? With pers, twenty-two percent or something?
It was, I believe, twelve point six percent.
Yeah, we had a big, big hit then, so we have a good...
Right, and we were, this is coming on the heels of a nine point three percent last year, a positive nine point three. So we've got two year, two positive years, which is gonna be really impactful.
Yeah, we had a, a big hit on the general fund.
We had a big hit a couple of years before that, so.
Yeah.
And it does, and, and you know, that's kind of the nature of CalPERS. Some, some years are gonna be low, and other years are gonna be high. And so we, we really wanna celebrate and take advantage of the years where we have the returns. I don't anticipate that it's going to decrease our payments, but it's going to make it so that the increases are manageable.
For sure. It's good news. Back to the city manager on the fireworks. How much, how much was that for a ticket?
The fifteen hundred, so we total that all up and be around thirty-six potential thousand dollars.
How much?
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand went out there. And I know a lot of people wanted more out there, and I know you guys were busy out doing what you had to do. And I know sometimes it was just a warning, but I think it's a good start. And as some people wanted to see a lot more, but I think, aren't the drones still reviewing things? They're potentially more, or is that it?
We use planes, I don't know if you wanna...
Yeah, I can weigh in on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we actually used, it was an airplane, not a, not a drone. I was able to speak with him today. I don't have the final report, but he told me there were fifteen violations. So he'll send that over here in about the next week or so.
So there's, there could be more, correct?
Potentially.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Ball, you had a question?
Oh, just real quick, I, so great news on the CalPERS, and I appreciate your clarity on whether our payments would go up or down. But I'd, because, you know, this council, just in the past, put a certain amount of money, Sunset Measure I, towards that. Just would love to see how it might update the projections on, on this through 2035 eventually. Is that something that we can, and it may not look much different in the payments, as you mentioned, but...
So CalPERS really is a, it, is delayed. So what, we're not gonna see the effects of this return probably for about two years. And so what we have in the budget right now is, is not gonna change. Those are the payments that we need to make. It, what it's gonna do is impact future payments. And if you remember, we've talked about how over the next four to six years, the payments are going to continue to rise. What this is gonna do is help those taper off, not rise quite so steeply.
Yeah.
I, I, when that, when we get those numbers, I can point out what, what the impact was, but we're not gonna be able to project that specifically until we get actuarial reports and so forth.
And again, maybe no rush when it's appropriate, but you're excited about it. And I'd love to wrap my head around why and what those impacts are long-term, just to, to help my brain kind of understand that. And then just on the homeless thing, that's great news. No, no doubt, hundred percent. Great, great, great effort across the board. We have been here before. We have seen a clean riverbed in our rearview mirror. And over time, it's gone back to the way it has been. So again, staying on top of it is a, is a term you used. But I'd love to be updated and get some, you know, some input and some feedback from the police chief and all the parties on, okay, well, it's great to clean it out, but how do we keep it moving in the right direction over time? That's something I'd definitely love to learn more about.
Yeah, I think it's important, like the mayor was saying, that we've got more people engaged. There's, there, we've gotten a lot of good support, so I hope that'll continue.
Awesome, great news.
Anybody else? Councilmember Bridge?
I'm just trying to get a couple of clarifications on the upcoming agendas. We have a presentation today is on the handbook. Is one of these upcoming line items that? Is line five or line ten related to the presentation today, or is it something else?
I think that would be the, the direction of council. If there's something you guys wanted to discuss on the handbook, I think that's why it's on there.
I think we, we asked it to come back to the handbook, come back in six months to see how it was going with respect, I think it was to PDs.
I thought that was the public safety.
With, with respect to them, yes.
And I thought where we'd gotten on that was you wanted to wait until there was a public safety commission. And they had a couple of meetings, and they would come back and make a...
I think, I think when we get to that item, we'll, we'll have more discussion on what's happening.
No, what's on the agenda today is something that you requested in January, the very first meeting of January. It was the entire commission handbook.
Okay.
Then later on, you, you requested something specific for public safety, which is in December, January.
Fair enough, so it's not one of the items on here, then?
The, I believe what you're looking at on the future agenda list is the council handbook.
Okay, and this is the...
Commission handbook.
Commission handbook.
Commission handbook, okay. All right, fair enough.
So you know, it's not a presentation from staff, I believe. It's just a discussion that you guys requested.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to prepare for these meetings and figure out what the heck topics are. And it wasn't in the, the presentation wasn't in the preloaded items, so it's kind of like we're shooting in the dark a little bit. My next question is a protocol on, if I wanted to close one of these items or two of these items, would I wait till council concurrence, or can we just call...
Let's wait to the end of the meeting.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comment on consent calendar. Consent calendar. We have seven items on consent. We have approval of minutes, April twenty-second, 2025, April twenty-ninth, 2025. We have a payroll, June twentieth, 2025, a two point one million. Voucher June ninth through thirteenth, for seven hundred ninety-three thousand. Another voucher register for June sixteenth to the twentieth, for one point three million. Adoption of ordinance number seventeen twenty-nine twenty-five, designg fire hazard severity zone. Number four is adoption of resolution six-seven six-three twenty-five, approving and updating public transportation agency's safety plan, authorizing staff to submit to California Department of Transportation. Number five, approval of minute license agreement with DIS Wireless LLC, installation of wireless telecommunication facility at Ryan Park. And number six is the Long Poak Tourism Improvement District, twenty-twenty-five annual report by Visit Long Poak, Inc. Amendment of two thousand nineteen to twenty-eight management agreement with Visit Long Poak, Inc. to adjust the annual report's submitted deadline. And number seven, adoption resolution sixty-seven sixty-five twenty-five, accepting and approving, adopting the tentative agreement for successor memorandum of understanding and approving MOU between Long Poak Police Officers Association for a period of July first, 2025, through June thirtieth, 2027, amending the city's compensation plan, pay plan to reflect the revised salary ranges in the MOU for the three non-represented positions approving as supplemental appropriations. So with that, we'll, public comments.
Good evening, council. Gilda Ayello here. I just wanted to bring to your attention, obviously, as the mayor just read, you'll be receiving the annual report, marketing report for Visit Long Poak. The information for the report has gone already to your finance department, and they have had a chance to preview. As every prior year, they have all the financials. So we just ask that you accept the report, please, on behalf of Visit Long Poak. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. Along the same item, on today's consent calendar, item six, approving an annual report and approving an amendment to the management agreement between Long Poak and Visit Long Poak. Neither of these actions can be or should be done by this council today. State law requires that any modification of the management district plan shall be made pursuant to this chapter. It goes on to state that upon the written request of the owners' association, the city council may modify the management district plan only after conducting one public hearing on the proposed modification. The city council shall adopt a resolution of intention, which states the proposed modification prior to the public hearing, and provide notice to the stakeholders and the public. This wasn't done, so in regards to the modification, it's premature to accept any modification at this time. In regards to the report itself, Visit Long Poak has continued to fail to conform reports to generally accepted accounting principles. According to the response from the previous mayor, Osborn, the city grand, to the city grand jury, or the county grand jury, she stated that BLI was not required to and does not issue financial statements under generally accepted accounting principles. However, under the contract section ten point one, it states that in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, BLI shall maintain full and complete records of services under this agreement. The reason this is important is the way that Visit Long Poak is doing their accounting. If you have five dollars from last year, and you make ten dollars this year, and you spend seven, you should have eight dollars to carry over to the next year. On their books, they only show three, because they deduct that five dollars, and it comes off the books. And so the next year, they only show three dollars. That's why on the report this year, you show almost a million dollars. It's the first year it's ever been on the report, and that's what the county grand jury had looked at. So there's almost a million dollars that's no longer accounted for. It's a net item there, but it's not shown how it's spent or where it's held. It's just a line item of money. Again, it's not a generally accepted accounting principle to do that. No other T-bid in the state does that. An example would be SLOW T-bid. They carry a hundred thousand dollar reserve year over year. Every other dollar that isn't spent goes on the reports from one year to the next, to the next, and they either spend it or they carry it over. That would be the most efficient way for transparency. It's been brought up by the county grand jury that it was not consistent and that it was not clear as far as how their accounting's been, been handled. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Paul Patel, board member of Explorer. Long Poak, this was addressed last year on what a marketing report is and what an actual financial report is. And this year's report has both, just to clarify it. And also, the city's finance manager also went through it. So that clarifies both marketing report and financial report.
Anybody else? This is on public comment on consent calendar. Okay, does anybody on council wish to pull any of these items? Councilmember Bridge?
Yeah, I'd like to pull this item and bring it back.
You wanna pull number six? Okay. Anybody else? Looking for your, you guys aren't fast on those motions right now. Looking for a motion for approval of consent calendar, less, item six. You guys were fast the other day. Somebody just had a baby or something, huh? Okay, we got motion by Starbucks, second by Bridge. What do we, what's your motion, Councilmember Stone?
Except consent calendar, except for item six.
Good job.
You forgot that already?
Checking on you. All right, let's go ahead and vote. That passes 5-0. So we have another staff presentation on management service finance sector part of schedule of council requested budget discussion items.
Good evening, council, mayor. We're going to put up a slide here to go over the budget discussion request. These are items that were captured during our budget discussions. There were requests that were made by various council members and we had said we were going to come back with dates of when we will bring these to council for discussion. I'd like to point out, these are likely to, we are likely to bring these sooner, or many of these sooner than what is up here. But recognizing that we are working all of these items in with our regular tasks in closing the fiscal year, we wanted to make sure that we didn't underpromise. So the first one is a review of input or revisions for department goals and objectives. I believe Mr. Bridge had provided a number of pages of suggestions for department goals and objectives. All of the divisions are reviewing those. We plan to have those back to council by September 2025. And the reason that that takes a little bit of time, in order to bring it by September, we need to have it completed in August. So we just take, we need to have some time to be able to reply to those and then get them onto the agenda. So the general fund reserve policy review is going to be a two-tiered approach. We're going to look at what it takes to recoup to policy levels and the process for doing that. And then the second item would be to review and evaluate the appropriate levels per the GFOA criteria. And those are some pretty extensive criteria that we're going to go over and that we're going to look at doing that by November 2025. Credit card fees and evaluation of vendor and recovery options. This is in, we're going to be doing an ongoing analysis of fees. And we can bring each month information on the fees. But as far as doing an evaluation of the vendor and any recovery options for charging or passing through our fees to customers, we would look at bringing that in October of 2025. Evaluation of fund restrictions, Mr. Bridge had asked that we go through our various funds, the restricted funds, and evaluate whether or not we, there's any... Just what the exact specifications of the restrictions are. And so we will be going through those throughout close and audit. And as we are closing out those funds, we will be evaluating the restrictions on them. And if there are any specific questions between now and when we present our final audit report in February, I believe it'll be in February. I put March here just because I don't know if we're going to be able to do an evaluation of the fund restrictions at the exact same time that we do our closing presentation. Security, fire, panel, alarm, contract status update. We are working on starting a negotiation process on that. We just want to be able to have time to work with our current vendor and come to a good agreement with that. And so we're bringing that back in December. Fire will be bringing a presentation on regional dispatch in August of 2025. There was a question on staff scheduling concerns and time clocks update. There are many pieces within the HR department to evaluate on this, meet and confer with the unions and just a lot of different pieces we're going to look at, bringing an update on that and what steps are going to be necessary to evaluate that in January of 2026. And finally, the utilities deferred CIPs. There are several utility CIPs that were deferred that are concerned or critical. And we will be bringing those as one-off items if and when it's determined that the item is critical with a request for appropriations or debt financing as necessary. And so those we brought as required and as needed. Those are the ones that we had captured. If I've missed any, if you could please note that at the end of the council meeting as additional council requests, we will be adding these to the council request list and adding these dates in as indicated. Do you have any questions?
There's one right off the top. It's, I guess, it's coming back maybe in August, and that was the carbon credit rebate.
Yeah, that's already, it's on the list, I believe.
That was already on council request. It was already on the council request. We're prepared to go back.
All right, so I'll make sure.
Absolutely.
Okay. Councilmember Bridge?
I would like to pull back at least the way it's being described, the evaluation of fund restrictions. What my request was, was for the restricted funds to identify the source of the restriction and give me the document number or location. I did not ask for an evaluation. I just asked for the data so I could go research it. So I don't want to create a bunch of work. If we have restricted funds, we must have them restricted by something and just identify what that something is and I can go educate myself. So hopefully that will enable that to happen before March of next year and should significantly reduce the interpretation that I'm hearing.
So if I'm understanding, what you're saying is that you want to be able to identify the document that is, that explains the restriction?
Yeah. If you tell me that it's restricted by state law 2436, I'll go find the state law. But I'm not asking you to evaluate. I'm not doubting the restriction. I just want to understand it.
Okay. And then are you asking that for every restricted account?
I think at the time I had put a number on it of 250K or something. It's the larger restricted funds. We have a lot of money locked up in restricted funds, carbon credit, for example. And I just want to understand what is locking those up. And it's not that I doubt that they're locked up. I just want to educate myself on that.
So we can certainly work on getting those...
And they don't need to come all at once either.
Okay. And that was what the March date is, is because in order to get through all of them, maybe six months. But if we can give you information as we get it, we're going to evaluate those, or not evaluate, but look at what those restrictions are. Some of those are internal accounting restrictions that are...
Just indicate that.
Then we'll have to go through those. We'll identify those.
Just indicate that and we'll have a conversation.
Good.
Okay. And then the other item was, there was a lot of, during the CIP presentation, there was a lot of confusion on the CDBG restrictions related to ADA. And I had to send a letter over to Dean and the lawyer, I believe. So I'd like that included on this list. Those were the two that jumped out at me. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I will have to, I won't be able to give you stuff today because I didn't see this list until now. So I don't have my list in front of me. It'd be nice to have that one so I could have related if you wanted the answers. But I will review it and get back to you on that. But understand that the time clock aspect has been on for almost eight years on the list for discussion. It's been a long time that's been on a list. And staff scheduling concerns, one was about the remote work and about funding those positions through the budget as well. So we'd like to see them come back a little further than January 2026. It's been hanging out there for a long time.
Could I make a comment?
Yeah, Councilmember.
I don't really, we keep getting hung up on the... Microphone. We keep kind of getting focused on the term "time clock." And I really think what you're reaching for is time accountability or accounting. And so I 100% support you. I just, you know, there's an image that happens on that that I don't, at least in our conversations, I'm not sure that's exactly what... That's my only comment.
Yep. Okay, I'll have to get back to you on that. I don't know if any of the council members had some things as well, but I think we'll have to get back to you on that. Okay? Anybody else? Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, oral communications, another three minutes. Anybody else?
Good evening again, and not to beat a dead horse, but there was a second point of contention with Visit Lampoke. During the county grand jury report that the city filed, they stated that Lampoke does not have any authority over VLI to instruct or require VLI to undergo an independent financial audit and that there is nothing in law or in Lampoke-VLI agreement or in the management district plan that allows Lampoke to require it. However, the city attorney on May 2nd, 2023, in a document entitled Analysis and Response Allegations Made by Martin Bender, wrote, and I quote, "In addition, Visit Lampoke reports a carryover amount for each year and that the city's finance division is unable to confirm. A complete independent financial audit would need to be performed to be able to identify any discrepancies, as well as the extent and reason for those discrepancies or any errors that may be made by Visit Lampoke. Under section 10.1 and 10.2 of the Visit Lampoke contract, the city has the right to inspect Visit Lampoke's records and conduct a contract compliance audit. The city council may direct city staff to engage an auditing firm to undertake an independent financial audit of City, of Visit Lampoke's financial statements if desired." So both of these statements can't be true, and in this case, the city attorney is correct. The city council does have the contractual authority to require an audit going back at least five years. And if that wasn't enough reason for the city to do that, the city in a recent publication noted that there was one discrepancy of $9,450 that the city was not able to reconcile. You can't have transparency of government without accountability. And if the city was already able to find a nearly $10,000 error, how many more errors would be revealed during a financial audit? And oddly enough, Visit Lampoke themselves, two years ago, held a meeting, myself, several other members of the community, even the news station was there. They took a vote and they agreed to hire an independent audit of their books and to release that to the public. And six months went by, requested a copy of the audit, and it was never done. And to this date, has never been done willingly by them. So at this point, it's my ask that the city council request an independent audit of that book. They're carrying $1 million on the books. It's been a contract for over a decade now. And at this point, no one has ever audited the account to make sure it's in compliance. That's it.
Anybody else? Oral communications. See, nobody writes, we will close. Oral communications, come back, item number eight, appointments. What do we got on the appointment list? Councilmember Ball, do you have some?
Yes, if I may, I'd love to nominate Christine Caldwell for the Human Services Commission for the term ending in December of 2028.
Okay, you have a second for his nominations? We got a Ball Bridge. All right, let's go ahead and vote. You got a... It's not going? There you go. You got a Human Service Commissioner, 5-0. All right. Anybody else?
Public Safety Commissioner.
I have a Public Safety Commissioner.
Councilmember Vega, okay, Public Safety Commissioner.
John Harris for Public Safety Commissioner.
All right, you got a motion for that? Vega made it, second by Bridge, go ahead and vote. Wait till the pretty colors turn on. There's your vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to public hearing. I think we have anything else, right? You guys closed on nominations? Nothing else? No surprises? Okay. Public hearing, item number nine, public hearing regarding nuisance abatement of weeds, rubbish, refuse and dirt. Adoption Resolution 6766, print release 25. John Stephens is the fire marshal. You've been waiting for this all night, right?
That's me.
Exciting. Him too.
Good evening. So in accordance with Resolution Number 675025, declaring weeds and debris on identified parcels as public nuisances, the fire department mailed notices to owners of all parcels listed informing them of the nuisance conditions of the date, time, location of the public hearing. The notices also informed each property owner, if they abated the nuisance by January 1st, then the city would not impose the administrative fees or special assessments authorized by Government Code Section 39573, Attachment 2 for the sample of that letter. I inspected all of the subject parcels and found nuisance conditions still existing on some parcels described in Exhibit A to Resolution Number 675025, Attachment 1. To proceed with the abatement of the public nuisance, it is necessary for the city council to hear any objections to the clearing of weeds and removal of rubbish, refuse or dirt. If good cause is shown why the weeds on the certain parcel should not be abated, then the city council may sustain the objection. Remove that parcel from the list. If the property owner objects but does not show good cause why a parcel should not remain on the list, then the city council may overrule the objection. After hearing all interested persons wishing to speak, the city council is requested to overrule or sustain the objections presented, modify the property list if necessary and direct abatement of the city, by the city. I do have some addresses that need to be removed from the list that they took care of their issues or are in process of removing them. Do you guys have your list? Okay. I'm going to go by case number. So case number 12, 21, 33, 34, 42, 72 and 73 can be removed from the list. So I have four outstanding.
Any questions? Councilmember Vega?
I don't have a question. My light was on.
Councilmember Ball?
Just because we need to ask you something. What is a mystery lot?
Oh, the mystery lot?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Gosh, that's a good question. So the mystery lot is a lot that exists... Okay, if you know when you drive into the Elks from Ocean Avenue and you're driving back and right next to the Elks, you'll see tennis courts on the right-hand side that belong to the condos or townhomes next to it. Before you get to those tennis courts, the mystery lot. It's right on the right-hand side. There's weeds, I don't know, this tall. But it's owned by a company. And it hasn't been addressed. And it has no address and it is .05 acres.
You have another one. Here's 109 South Third Street, which you... You have another one, here's 109 South Third Street, which you have it as 10th July. Does that mean it's done, or? That's case number? Three quarters of the way down?
It's not on my list, but, um, give me the address again?
109 South Third Street?
It just has a date instead of case number.
No, I was, I, I don't need the ca, I don't have it in front of me, but I can picture the lot.
Okay.
Um, yes, it was removed.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Okay, we'll open this up for public comments. Public comments.
Good evening, Kate Griffiths, resident. Um, I just want to speak on, um, the matter of 30 Cambridge Drive, which is a vacant lot. And, um, I'm very grateful that the Fire Marshal has, uh, is gonna be moving forward with a weed abatement because there's been no weed abatement on this vacant lot for over a year. Some of the weeds are over four feet high, and it's not just a matter of our real property and that cul-de-sac, but we also have a number of, um, beloved residents that are late 80s, early 90s, and to evacuate out of that cul-de-sac in a fire will be very onerous for them, and we've had this happen in the past where there was a fire coming over the ridge on the south side. And, um, I just want to remind everyone that it's not just real, not just real property, but it's also personal lives, and we really would like to see that cleaned up. We're all rather nervous about the fact that the weeds have been allowed to be this high for so long. Thank you very much for taking care of it.
Any more public comment? On the public hearing for nuisance abatement. Seen nobody else rise? Looking for that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilor Vega makes the motion. What is your motion, Councilor Vega? Adopt the resolution and attachment number one? Less the items.
Off the list, correct?
Accept the resolution, less the items removed from the list. Are we good with that? City attorneys, you got a head nod? Yes? Second by Councilor Ball, let's go ahead and vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, so moving on to number 10. Council discussion review of city boards, commissions, and committees. As the council requests, anybody want to lead on discussion? Does anybody want to move forward with this discussion, or do you want to bring it back at another time? Bring it back.
Well, I, I would like to bring it back, and now that I know exactly what it is we're, we're trying to discuss. But I was trying to pull my files up, but I can't on my phone, so I'm not very adept that way, so I'd like to bring it back.
Bring it back at the next meeting. Councilor Ball, you had something, or?
No, that makes sense. I'd love to.
That makes sense as well, okay. So, let's go to continue this item to the next meeting? Okay, do I need a motion now, or are we good to continue this this way?
You don't need a motion. We'll just bring it back.
Just making sure. Want to make sure to keep you happy. Oh, Councilor Starbuck.
I need a brighter light. Yeah, the Public Safety Commission was one of the items that was gonna be part of this discussion, and July 23rd is a special meeting where they're gonna discuss frequency of their meetings, I think, so I don't know if they would have time unless we want to try and squeeze it in on an August 5th meeting or go to the second meeting in August. Just throwing it out there.
Well, my only comment would be, we're in no rush on this. If we want to bring it to 1st of September, that's okay with me. I was going to let folks know in the council concerns, but middle of August, I'll be gone, so. So, first meeting in September is fine with me.
How about that? Continued first meeting in September? Got a head nod? Yes. You good with that, Councilor? Ball?
Yes.
Everybody? You good? We're good. All right. Did I need to take public comment on it with the continuance?
No, you don't.
You're too excited. Okay. New business. Number 11, adoption of Resolution Number 6764, Prose 25, establishing new fares for the City of Longpoke Transit System. Mr. Fernbaugh, Transit and Airport Administrator.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have a resolution before you this evening to increase fares and adopt new fares for the transit system. The last time we did this was 2008. This follows on a decision by the council last December to establish new routes and expand our system. We are now changing our routes from, um, basically a circular route system to a cross-town east-west route system, and it'll provide better timing for everybody and, and less transit stops for people to, uh, deal with. We're also establishing a, an application, uh, for phones and such, so people will be able to get rides by app and also pay by app. And it also establishes a new micro-transit on-demand system for all day on Saturday and evening times. So it's, it's, uh, an expansion of the system that we did have. We did a, a year-long study almost to find out where people were and how we could best serve the community with the new routes. So, that's before you. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilor Bridge?
I, I can't tell it from here, but, um, just as a general top level, we are implementing kind of a car system of buses and then, for lack of a, a better term, Uber-type system where people can call up and get their rides.
Yes, uh, during the normal daytime hours between 6:00 and 5:00, we'll have a regular route system. And then after 5:00, uh, we'll have micro-transit, which is basically you get on an app and order the service. It's a corner-to-corner service, not a door-to-door service like our ADA system. But it is similar to Uber.
Okay, so they don't have the micro-transit during the day, only after hours?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we base that on the ridership. It tends to go down in the evening times. They have large buses running around, picking up one person. I think that's outmoded and inefficient, so we're going to the micro-transit.
Well, I'm a big fan of the micro-transit. I, I would be curious, um, and maybe this could be the next time you come back, what the restriction of door-to-door is, because you're talking about one person, whether you pick them up at the corner, at the end of their street, or at their front door. I, I'm having a little trouble seeing a differentiation of that, and I would think it would be a nice perk to be able to be picked up in front of your house. But you answered my questions. Thanks.
Any other questions? So, real fast, so on-demand micro-transit, single trip only is $4?
Yes.
So, how does the work? Are we not in the micro-transit competing with the local taxi system that way?
Not really. The local taxi system mostly goes, is basically a door-to-door. This will be a corner-to-corner, uh, so you don't get that very personalized service.
If you live on the corner, you do though, right?
Right.
Or cul-de-sac, I don't know, but. It's just interesting, because I know the bus system itself doesn't necessarily compete with private enterprise, but now it appears we are kind of competing with private enterprise, and not. And what, what kind of vehicle is the, the micro-transit? What, what are you taking? What is the?
Right now, we're gonna be using our smaller buses. After we establish a pattern and number of riders, uh, we look at going to a smaller vehicle.
When you say smaller bus, what's a smaller bus? How many passengers?
12 to 16.
So 12 to 16 to do a micro-transit?
Our larger buses are 30.
I got you. It's a half-size bus, but still. And this goes from what hours to what hours?
Uh, the evenings are 5:00 to 10:00. And all day on Saturday are in a regular 9:00 to 5:00 period on Saturday.
Seems like it, uh, I don't know. Not quite sure how I feel about, what, what is paying the gap of this? Obviously, it costs more than $4 to take that bus from one side of town to the other side of town, so, or idling around, sitting and waiting. What is, what's the funding mechanism to cover?
Transit is funded by federal and state grants. And right now, there is no, uh, fare box ratio that's required. There was a 20% fare box ratio in the past, but that's been suspended and is being considered by the state to be done away with.
Just seems like this is gonna be a lot more of a subsidy, so I'm just wondering, is this misery money, or what, what is covering the?
Our, our grants are set by the state and federal government. We get a certain amount, uh, so our subsidy changes year to year, but it's based on what they give us.
And granted, because it's a new item, you don't necessarily know what the subsidy is going to be, but is there a threshold at all that triggers with a program called successful or not successful?
No.
No, so if you get one ride all day for all week, and you get $4, do you know what it's gonna cost to run this program?
Uh, we have a, a contract that's based on an hourly rate. And so, we will, you know, our contractor provides those hours based on what we set up in the contract.
Do you know what that is right now for the hourly rate on that? I know I'm asking a lot of questions, it's just.
It's about $80 per ve, per vehicle hour.
$80, wow. Guess that's why we can't fix the potholes in the streets, right?
Yeah, can't use that fund for those.
Well, we used to in the old days. Gas tax did pay for a lot of this stuff, and now it's been going to the transit components, and that's why we have a lot of the difficulties we have. And originally, gas tax was out there to fix the streets and bridges, and now we get penalized, and I get it, it's not your fault, you're the... But it'd be interesting to see, I can't wait to see how it, uh, how it translates. You would need 20, you would need 20 trips an hour to cover this, taking a 16-to-20-passenger bus from corner to corner. Very interesting. All right, any other questions? Councilor Bridge?
I just want to be, uh, understand, understand where we're at. This, this migration to micro-transit was pretty clearly defined in the transit plan that we approved three months ago or six months ago. Is that not correct?
Reimagining study that we did for transit was last year.
Last year?
Yeah.
And that, and this micro-transit was a fairly...
The limited micro-transit. Nationwide micro-transit as a, you know, singular service in a city doesn't seem to be working. Uh, they seem to be at more calls than they can handle. So we have basically a hybrid system.
And there's nothing really driving us to the 30.
No.
Or, we could get down to a station wagon if that handled the load, right? Okay, thank you.
Councilor Ball? Oh, just talking about efficiencies, it sounds like we haven't really raised rates since 2008, but we've been driving the 30 person buses all over town for years and years, and now we're trying to maybe streamline a few of those systems. Is that fair?
Yeah, the, the point right now is to find out what the demand is and what kind of vehicle would best fit that system. There are smaller vehicles out there, and, but before we, you know, we didn't want to go buy 10 of them and then not have it work. So we're looking at maybe a year's worth of study and, you know, to see what kind of vehicles we actually need. We're also going into the electrification process in a couple of years, and there are currently smaller 10-passenger, uh, electric buses that could be better utilized with micro-transit.
Thank you.
I just have one more.
Councilor Bridge?
Just one more quick comment is, we're only a few years away from, these cars are all gonna be driven by themselves. And that's what the general trend is migrating to, is these small, on-demand transit systems that don't require drivers, so. You know, over the next five years, if we position ourselves, we can ride that wave.
Anybody else? Well, appears to be one a heck of a bargain. I mean, for $4, you can go from corner to corner. I mean, just cruise the town here someday, right? Yeah, right. Okay. Thank you for that. We're gonna open that up to public comment. We've got one coming.
Personally, I think this all sounds great. I am curious about the 10 o'clock cutoff. It seems like on some nights, anyway, certain ones in a week, maybe the cutoff should be at around the time that the bars close, which is quite a bit later than 10 o'clock. I mean, that would be a time when we'd want people to be using public transit. It's just a thought. It seems, 10 o'clock seems a little arbitrary to me for certain nights.
Thank you. Anybody else? Don't know, don't know. All right, we will go ahead and close this for public comments. And let's go ahead and bring it back to the council. You guys got any more questions from Mr. Fernwell, Councilor Vega?
I'll make the motion or we accept.
Okay, we got a Vega and a second by Councilor Ball. Let's go ahead and vote. And that passes 5-0. Can't wait. And we'll see how it goes. Do you have flexibility as well? This is part of the exploration of what's going on. Good comment, public comment. And if you're trying to get the service, I think the public commenter had a very valid point, so. Thank you, Mr. Fernwell. Okay, item number 12. Approval of agreement, new business, Longbow Valley Chamber of Commerce. And Mr. Albro, you're up.
Thank you. Um, this is coming back, um, from June 3rd, where the council discussed even $35,000 annually plus 26 in city services. On June 17th, during the budget agenda item, the council gave direction to set it at 108 for 25, 27 contract. I had one comment in the contract that says, uh, the chamber will do six to seven events, but I noticed on their calendar when I was making my announcement that there's only four. So when you make your motion, we'll have to address that. And that's all I have. I'll turn it over to you guys for direction.
Okay, questions with respect to this item? Item number 12, Councilor Bridge?
Has, has the staff done any analysis on the performability of this contract?
What was that again?
Has the staff done any analysis on the perfor- Has the staff done any analysis on the performability of this contract? Any other contract, we would normally have some analysis of whether the proposed work matches the contract terms. If the answer is no, that's fine. I just wanted to know before I step on my toes.
No more than, I mean, we look at what the duties they're performing and try and get it in the contract, but.
Okay, any other questions for staff before we open up for public comment? Okay, let's go ahead and open this up for public comment. It's item number twelve, new business. Approval of agreement on Longbow Valley Chamber of Commerce and Business Assistance Services. No public comment. We'll prepare for deliberations by council. Councilmember Bridge.
Emily, go ahead and put that up. While she's doing that, for the public, I've been asked why I do these briefing charts. And the real reason I do these is because it's the only way I can distribute information at the DS. Because if I do that. Just take one and pass it down.
Couple of these?
So I have some concerns with this contract. First off.
Sorry, Councilmember Bridge, just to confirm a few things for the public. So what you're presenting here on the PowerPoint is from you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And is that exactly the same as the document that you passed out to the city council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So I have some concerns about this contract. First off, I did a cursory examination. And there's no way I could ever perform this contract for two, for a hundred K. I came up with a number much closer to two hundred K. So that concerns me. I think there's some clauses in here that require review. I think there's a few clauses that provide members' benefits, and I don't think that's the intent. I think there's clauses in here that are representative of the fact that it's not funded adequately, such as the hours for being open, which they didn't, weren't able to perform last time. This time, it says if they can, they'll do it. So I don't know how to fund something like that. The event calendar, we go open up August, there's nothing on it. So they're not maintaining the event calendar. I also think there's scope in here that shouldn't be. I don't think we should be doing tourism promotion. You just, at the end of this meeting, we're going to discuss an organization has a million dollars in reserve for tourist promotion. The wineries have just done a T-bid of their own, so there's a duplicate. So that means we're really going to focus on cannabis. And I'm kind of concerned about that on a couple of levels. We're already seem to have enough cannabis that they're complaining about being able to sell enough. And I don't know why we'd pick on them and not do restaurants, for example. So I don't think we should be doing workforce development or any lobbying, which is in here. I think there should be KPIs for performance. I see no focus on the base, which is our economic engine here. So and I personally like to see us focus on a couple of large events in River Park. So my recommendation is we work with the chamber to modify the contract. Our staff works with the chamber to modify the contract, specifically to match the funding. I'd like to know if the contract can be performed. I think we should eliminate efforts being done by others. And we can eliminate nice-to-have efforts. And I think we should be focusing on economic growth, which is one of my campaign issues. So I'm biased there. But I think we should pivot to growing VSFB, its commercial opportunities. And we should add KPIs for reporting of performance. There is a modified contract to give you my ideas in writing. And yeah, you can just go through the next two pages so that it is legal. And can you get to the motion page? I'd make a motion, the staff is directed to meet with the chamber and review and improve the contract to ensure, one, that it's able to be performed with the available funding, that it contains no clauses that create member benefits, that activities better performed for others are not included, and that it focuses on tasks, it can be measurably impact on economic growth, and that it comes with clear success criteria. And I think we should have the financial audit in our hands before we approve the next contract. And at least what I think I read in the staff report was that that's not available yet. So it's tough for me to even analyze whether we're funding the whole thing or just a portion of the chamber. So that's my motion.
And before we look for a second, can we continue deliberations and questions to ask staff? Councilmember Bridge? Before we look for a second on your motion, can we take that as the sample of what you're requesting?
Oh, absolutely.
Just to deliberate.
Whatever works for the council.
Any other questions for staff?
Councilmember Wall. So first off, I have no problems with requesting an audit. I think that's reasonable. Transparency is important. But I do feel that, and again, if we want to clarify some things, at a hundred and eight thousand dollars, that's very, maybe that's something that we should consider. Councilmember Bridge, I don't necessarily argue that. You made a great argument for funding them more because there's a lot more that they could be doing. So perhaps two hundred thousand is a better number. But then again, tying that to results and performance, I think that's important, too. I would just be careful that we're not creating a situation where we're trying to demand so much for so little that you get your way and we shut down the chamber. So again, if it's a timing issue or I'm just, I'm curious that we have a contract created by a council member. When I thought staff was meeting, I understand a couple of people were meeting currently with the chamber discussions. How's that been going? Is that accurate?
Yeah, we sat down. If you notice, there's a lot of red lines in it. We adjusted the contract based upon both sides talking. But we can talk some more if you guys want to give us direction.
It's on, but can you hear you?
Did you hear that or no?
It was on, but I can barely hear you.
Oh, we went back and forth, and that's why you're seeing red lines in the contract. We're trying to make it match, but the expectations are. But if you guys want to give us clear direction, we can sit down in the chamber again and change it.
I'm not in the majority here, but if this turns out to be an impossible contract, so be it.
Councilmember Bridge.
I think that was a little presumptuous to say that I wanted to shut the chamber down. I went and looked at the contract. I don't think it's fair to put a chamber on a contract that can't perform. I asked, the first question I asked, whether the staff had done any evaluation? And the answer was no. I don't know of any business that would let a contract out that had not evaluated whether it could be performed. I'm certain when they put RFPs out and they get written proposals back, they evaluate that. I spent many hours evaluating it, seeing what we could leave. The contract I provided is performable. It's performable with the funds that we've allocated. It focuses on economic development versus workforce development, for example. I don't think Longbow's problem today is workforce development. We send thousands of people out of this town every day. So we have plenty of workforce. We just don't have jobs. And to get jobs, you need to focus on economic development. That was the same thing I told them in January, when I said I'd really like to see us focus on that. There was no action taken to try to focus on that. I left in things like tourism, which is covered by other organizations. So I think it's blatantly inappropriate to say that I wanted to shut them down, or I wouldn't have spent all this time trying to find a contract that would work.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, Councilmember Wall.
And again, it's just my personal feeling, but, you know, I can talk offline about it. That's fine. I would say that you did mention that some of the reasons that you've came up with this is because you don't believe that they are performing. And all I would say to counter that is that we had a room full of people speaking one after another about the value and the performance that they are receiving as a value from the chamber. So I just ask that that be considered.
Well, just as a last comment, I didn't say that they weren't performing.
I said that there are clauses in this contract that they were not performing. And it's been documented, they don't have open doors. That's still in the contract. I'll be happy to share with you the event calendar, which is funded in there, that is not being performed. So I'm not suggesting that they're not performing. I'm suggesting that we are establishing clauses on this contract that they won't perform, and we're funding, and they will fail miserably again. And I don't think we should set anyone in this city up to fail. If they're performing valuable services for the business community that's not member benefits, let's get it in the contract. Let's get it specific of what it is they're going to do. Because I don't know anybody who could perform that contract for a hundred thousand dollars. So they're going to pick and choose what they feel comfortable with. And it may not be what you think they should perform.
Councilmember Wall. I think that's totally fair. And again, if we can, if you'll remain flexible. But again, for that little amount of money, there's only so much that they can do. But if they can tighten up with clarity what they can perform and deliver right now, I'm hopeful that you remain open to being agreeable to some finish line that keeps them open and funded. And if we can push them to adjust certain things, take away focus from another area and open their doors on occasion, that's fine. To say that tourism shouldn't be included, I hear you. But they still get a lot of organic requests and calls about tourism-related things. They don't necessarily just pass off to the T-bid. So just something to consider.
Well, that's true and absolutely. And I left that clause in that would answer all calls. I don't think having the Longbow Chamber deliver publications to Pismo Beach is in our interest. That's in there as well. So I provide, I would have provided it in advance, but with the Brown Act, I can't. So I've written it, you know, my idea is there's a full twelve-page contract in there that I'm more than happy to pursue. But I can't in good conscience put a contract out there I know they can't perform on and that are doing things that I don't think meet our goals.
And I told, just for clarity, I totally empathize with the system. Again, you've presented a lot of information and data and things that we literally got moments ago. So again, as long as we're trying to reach a finish line, that they can be updated and still perform what this room showed us is of some sort of valuable service to Longbow, then I think we're on the same page.
Councilmember Vega.
I tend to agree that we need a little bit more contract compliance language in our paperwork. I think that the city is weak on contract compliance. We have found that out as far as reinforcing. And I don't mean to be looking at you, but I mean, as far as reinforcement of the money that's out there, there should be some oversight. It shouldn't be any finger pointing as far as any default on any kind of, you know, tax representation and things. So we can't overlook that. I think it's, I think that what we should do is probably get a blend of what Councilmember Bridge is trying to do and have the city take a look at it and see what we can do, and then bring it back to us so that we can review it. But I think there's, there's nothing wrong with being a little more businesslike, because we expect the businesslike effort done to us. And I also think sustainability by the chamber in its own right should be part of this. I remember one of your comments, Councilmember Wall, and I'll bring that up, that you didn't have anything against them being asked to be sustainable within a certain timeframe, if that is the direction of the council. So I think that maybe some of that should be there, because memberships is part of it. And building memberships is part of building a strong community. So those are my comments. So whoever wants to make a motion moving forward, I think that we should move forward with some sort of contract language that's other than what the city's proposing. I think that the, being grateful for whatever they do is really, I am also. And I think it's good for the city to have that look. But we do have to be compliant. If it's the city's money, we need to at least put it under contract form and have some compliance and sustainability issues within that contract.
I got a couple of questions for staff. So as per contract, do you guys have a comprehensive budget, including a detailed itemized list of expenses? As per number six on page six of eleven? Have you received that?
No, we requested that along with the audit.
Okay, so have you received audit financials?
Twenty-three and twenty-four, no, not yet.
You haven't for the last two years?
No, sir.
Okay, so in your determination, as per item number Roman numeral four on page seven, eleven, would, maybe it's something for the city attorney to answer, but would you consider that they are in breach of the contract?
Yeah, I would say that's in breach of contract. That's why we're demanding that they update their files.
Okay. Is it your recommendation at this time? And there's other information out here, and just a simple question that I'm asking to see where we're going. But if they're in breach of contract, would it be your recommendation to give them funding until they cure the breach?
I'd leave that to the council's direction, if that's what you guys give direction to. I can definitely execute that.
I'm asking you, what would you recommend? I know it's council's.
I would want them to be updated and current. I think it got missed because they were falling underneath the chapter forty-five. And they were getting, they went to the finance board, asked for a waiver, and I think we granted it. So they kind of got caught up in that loophole is when we went back and realized that it was actually in the contract that they provided audit. So it was missed, if you will.
I was astonished when I came and asked you guys for the audits and.
And I know that they're having.
We didn't have it.
I know they're currently having a problem finding a CPA firm right now to perform those duties. So it would be my recommendation, we give them a little bit of time, maybe to try and get that up today, since we both missed it on both sides.
We have a lot of information here that we, as the city, are supposed to be doing. And in part is the, of course, we have to go and ask the chamber to make things available for inspection by authorized city personnel, financial and other records pertaining to performance of this agreement. Have the city reached out in the last two years with respect to item number nine of page seven of eleven, which is about the agreement evaluation and review?
I would, I would say we haven't been really hard on performanceing and exact match to this contract. We just make sure that they're performing, they're doing their annual report, they're doing everything that's in the contract. So already doing performance measures and making sure that they're doing them. Probably not as good as we could do.
So you're saying, is that a yes or a no? Maybe?
I think it's in between. Yes on a lot of numbers, not as good as we probably could do.
Okay. And I think that's important. We want to strive to make sure that whatever we're doing moving forward is doing better. I know we've, you know, some things got fuzzy for a little while there. We want to make sure that the people's money is going. Plus, I think it's very important that we have an obligation with the IRS and compliance. Is there are limitations that taxpayer monies can't be used for? We need to make sure that not saying that they're doing something. They're not supposed to, but it's our obligation, your obligations, to make sure that everything is copasthetic, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. And I know going back, I mean, Councilmember Starbuck, you have to go back fifteen, sixteen years. And that was with the LHCDC and the lack of oversight aspects that happened at that point. And I know that's where you had contract compliance we were supposed to look at. And it looks like we, maybe during the COVID haze or whatever it might have been. So things got left out. things got left out and, and such.
I think during that review, like I said, I know I've been on that compliance team with Councilmember Starbuck a lot. Like I said, a lot of times, we said, all right, give us an audit, you get it one year free, and so we kind of missed what was in the contract.
Sure, I know. So I went and asked for it. In seeing what Councilmember Bridge has put forward as well, I think he has something, some good ideas to digest as well, that probably could tune up a little bit more that's what's in here, take some things out. I think he has some valid points relating to the wine and the cannabis. And I definitely agree that the building needs to be open. I know they had volunteers before it was left. If we had a volunteer, we'll have open. I think you really need a chamber commerce that has a door that's open for a specific amount of time. I think the 10 to 2 aspect, six days a week is, I mean, that should be the minimum. I would like to see a little bit more. Hopefully, we can get the volunteers to step up or whatever it takes to get those doors open. I have made calls there and still never got calls back, which I find interesting. I have had people very frustrated coming to City Hall, looking for the chamber and asking why the doors aren't open. I think it's important that we have that layer of representation out there as well. We can't just have a chamber that's by appointment only, or we'll get back to you and whatever. When people are coming here, they're wanting some sort of connectivity that needs to happen. But I do believe that there could be some aspects of Councilmember Bridge that is put through here. To go back and re-scope, I know you guys did some work of redlining in here. It believes that even if we have a contract, but we're not pushing the items in this contract to be honored, again, it's, the people have the sign on this contract, or both sides responsible of not completing the contract. So I think we definitely need to do better, but I'll go with Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. And again, this is what it is. I hope we can figure this out. Only comment I'll say, and again, I'm not defending them not being open, but I am going to defend capacity, because I know the chamber, I've known it well for many years. And again, many years ago, they had staff of three or four people. However they funded it, they had it. But they were able to do quite a bit more capacity-wise. So I hear you, I know what you guys are saying, but there's literally one person right now, a little over one person, to do all of the stuff minus the volunteers. So I get the ask, but I, I hope that you guys are also being creative on making sure that we can fund them enough to achieve some of these things. So Councilmember Bridge, I'll do my due diligence to go through what you put together and to see, I guess my question to you is, for $108,000, do you, do you think that there's capacity for them to be open as a performance element in this contract that you've put together?
I question whether they can be open with the staffing that they have. One, one thought I had, which I did not put in here because it seemed presumptuous, but perhaps the city could team with the chamber, and the city would man some kind of set of racks or whatever for the weekdays, and the chamber would be open on the weekends when the city staff's not here. I'm open to creative solutions. I'm not open to approving a contract I know somebody can't perform. I think that's unethical.
Sure.
You know, and, and I think we can have discussions on what the focus of the time they have available and the resources they have available should be. I have my opinion on that. Some of the members that came here have their opinion. I personally think economic development is what we need badly in this town. We need to get the stores filled up. And not to be redundant, but I don't think we need much effort on workforce development. It's a wonderful thing, but we've got colleges and schools that are doing this. So I really made a good forthfaith effort on putting a contract together. I thought it might be a little sketchy, but they could, they could certainly perform more easily than what the contract was originally, because I've taken out multiple clauses that we were saying you have to go do. And so, so again, that was a good faith effort made to come up with a solution that I think gets us what we need. If you think there's something else we need, then probably something has to go.
Again, I don't know, because we got this a few seconds ago, and I sympathize with the process on that. Again, it's, you've made a great argument that there's probably not enough money going to the chamber for them to perform some of the things. And again, I just ask for some understanding and flexibility that, again, we're asking one person to answer every phone call, keep the doors open, manage 200-plus business members, and come up with a plan for economic development. So it's a lot, just that, not even to mention events and all those other things, so.
I agree with that 100%, and I didn't actually ask them to come up with an economic development plan. I suggested a plan of steps they could do that would increase our economic development. There are concrete tasks with CPIs associated with them, and I'd rather have them doing that than driving to Pismo and dropping off brochures.
Councilmember Starbuck.
You know, one of the things, maybe, we could go back and forth on this all night, but I think great ideas, I like what you're proposing. I think it makes sense. I think getting out of that other contract, almost starting anew, is a good thing. One of the ways I think we could start it, you look under the reporting requirements on page six here, in the very bottom, a comprehensive budget, including a detailed and itemized list of expenses that have been charged against the monthly payment received by us, and chamber's contribution to the expense item. This way, we know what they spend a month, okay? If their, if their hands are tied because they're, this is what they get that month, and they don't, I mean, it would be a good place to start if we could get that alone. What is the budget? What are you proposing? You know, what, and from there, we could build a budget, we could build our requirements, and maybe come up with something all-new.
Councilmember Ball. And no argument here, I think the only question I have, just being sensitive to what I kind of got the gist of from the chamber, is what impact this might have if a delay is necessary or more discussions, all totally fine, but the timing, right? Because they've mentioned, like, they're kind of up against it. So again, is this a priority for us to figure this out sooner than later? How soon can we come back and talk about this? Or is this, we push this off two or three months, and then we find out, oh, they couldn't stay solvent?
Well, I agree with you 100%, which is why I probably spent six hours writing a contract that I believe is executable. Obviously, staff needs to meet with the chamber and see whether they agree. But I feel like I've taken the steps to get us to the next place.
When does chamber get a chance to see this? How would that, how does that work? Timing-wise? Is it public now?
It is public now, and staff could certainly present it. I don't think I can legally do it before today.
And I would just encourage, because it is public, anyone involved, please get your eyes on this, start making notes. Again, I think it's this council's goal ultimately. We did hear the room. That's our goal, to get to the finish line. Let's all work really hard together, try to make that happen. I appreciate all the work that's been done to this point by staff, this council being flexible, and this community for stepping up.
Councilor Vega.
You know, I'd like to make a motion if we can, if we have a lot of discussion. What's that?
We have a motion.
What is it?
Right there.
Well, that's not my motion.
Okay, that's my motion, let's vote it down.
Well, you know what?
You want to make the motion, make the motion, that's all right.
He did, I just asked him if we could have discussion before we- Okay, then I'm all for this. I just, you know, we've talked going back and forth. We're not going to solve the contract issue right here, but we do have to have the questions moving forward. So I'd like to at least add maybe a second. Okay, sir? So I didn't mean to, just, we just got carried away. We're just asking so many questions here, as if we're going to solve it tonight, but the questions need to be asked. But I'd like to move this forward to the city staff so that they can go through the headings of everything in this contract, as a contract should be, and have them come back to us to see what we can solve and what maybe is overwhelming to the chamber. Because budget-wise, I think they've signed a contract that really, you know, you sign it with goodness of heart, that you think you can do everything, and I think that probably we can help, okay? By saying, hey, we can't do this, this, and this, and this, you know? Maybe overpromising isn't working, and maybe it makes us look with fresh eyes to see what money can be helped or allotted and redirected. And I think that's what all of us are saying. Let's take another look at it and see if we can get more of the compliance issue here, because right now, it's finger pointing, saying, hey, okay, we need the building open is one of the things, whether it's volunteerism or some other help that the city can help with sometimes, so that people actually can open the door. Because there's a lot of people old school. I know that I've gone there three times, and it's been locked, okay? And I think that probably if you're going to be a destination, you better be a destination. I think that's part of it. If the city doesn't agree that they should hold someone a little bit more accountable, then they need to rethink this, because the money did come from somewhere. And that's all I ask. So that's kind of my second, and if it coincides with your-
Let me, he does have it in here on the page. Do I just add?
I just want us to get to a point where we're making a motion, because we're rehashing it, we're regurgitating it, and I don't think it's going anywhere.
Yeah, so we're working on that right now. So agreeing on there, the only thing that I would like to see that's in, what I've, granted, I only sped read this, in that you have some accountability with the miserables in here as far as the funding coming out. You have accountability of being able to, after you gave money back, if it didn't happen, you could ask for money back. But I think you have to have something looking forward, that if it's not happening, then the money doesn't get passed out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sure.
So adding that into your motion, in other words, likewise as well, I don't think it would be prudent for us without you guys having these, the audits, to let more money out. Does that make sense? As well?
Yes, sir.
Right, so just adding that on, onto your motion, along with going out to go back at the table with the items in here.
I think I'm a little unclear on some of these, the direction you're giving staff. Maybe we could go through them if that's what we need to do?
Well, you're able to review and approve the contract to ensure, we could, we could say there, there's not a mandate for insurance, it could be-
You want to say address instead of insurance?
Address, there we go.
More comfortable? I'm not trying to put you in a box, I'm trying to say, in my review, these were elements that needed to be looked at.
Well, like the first one, that it's able to perform with available fund, funding. What are we doing? What are we, what are we to bring back to you?
So the typical way I believe it's done is you take the contract elements and do an estimate as to what it takes to perform, what it takes to perform that. And you can have the chamber give you that, it's kind of like an RFP. But if they do that, if you ask the chamber to take that contract and, and tell you what it's going to cost to perform each of those clauses, I would be amazed if it comes in under $200,000. So either we don't understand what those clauses are asking?
Well, I agree. The city is not the only funding source. When I looked at the 990, I believe they had over a quarter of a million dollars of revenues that they have. Are we going to take that into consideration? Are we going to look at it? Or is that something I need to work out with the chamber?
These are, their funds are supposed to be used for member benefits. That's what they state. So none of those funds that we're spending are supposed to be for member benefits. And if they want to give us money, I, okay.
Okay, that makes me understand number two a little better.
Okay.
Okay, I think I understand what you're, you're getting at. And are you saying on number three, could you give me like examples? Or is it in the contract that you're, you're providing us today of examples that we would take out?
I have removed the clauses and the examples I gave you.
To remove?
I gave you in the briefing a few. For example, I think Explorer Lompoc is much better equipped for doing tourism promotion and taking pamphlets to Pismo.
Yeah, okay.
I think the T-bids for the wineries are much better equipped to market wineries. And I think the cannabis guys can do their own marketing. So those are three that immediately come to mind that we're suggesting we're going to spend money on. We don't have money. I mean, we're down to vapors, and we're spending money on things that other people are doing, and that just doesn't make sense to me, particularly with line item one, that I don't think they can perform what we're asking.
So it's the council's direction to remove anything from T-bid or Explorer Lompoc from the contract? If you talk about tourism, staff really didn't come up with a lot of those performance measures that are going to be in here. It's council. So I'm, I'm not going to change it unless they can't do it, and that's what I brought back. So if you want a different direction to me-
Another approach would be to go to the chamber and ask them to respond to a proposal, to perform the contract that they're saying they're going to do. You've done that for hundreds of contracts you put out. You say, please tell me what it would cost to do this. And if they come back and say, we can do it all for $108,000, I'll shut up.
But, no, I appreciate it. I just wanted to get clarity, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
So I don't want to belabor too much, but just a couple, a couple of quick things. And again, I'm sensitive to the chamber. You know, you mentioned that it is council direction. Ultimately, it's this chamber that's, five years ago, they were working on this, because this is what they were told is important to us. And then we shut down economic development at the city, and we just looked at the chamber and said, you guys go, you, you do something. And so they redirected, started paddling this way. So, I mean, I, I get that there's a, there's a lot that they've had to take on. And then to that point, it's, for that amount of money, what would you expect in that context? Not much, right? The other thing that I'd say about the finger pointing, I, I think this is a healthy discussion, but I'll be honest, the thing that frustrates me, all respect, is every single time I've been up here before, this current council, chamber was always there at this spot right here, answering questions, having a discussion, taking feedback. Here we are once again, talking about the chamber. They're sitting over there. We don't have that dialogue going here. So I do feel a lot of those top-level things could be accomplished right here, and we're not doing that. So again, I, let's do it. Let's throw it back at staff. Hopefully, they can read between the lines of what you're hoping for. They'll communicate with them. We'll hear from staff, we'll come back here, we'll argue again and hope for the best. I just, I'm lamenting that we don't have that conversation that we used to have.
Well, I lamented it too, but what I have sadly learned in the six months I'm here is I'm extremely restricted to what I can do. I can't call you up and talk about this, and then call you up and talk about this. I, to be fair, in January, I contacted the president of the chamber and said, here's what I care about. And they had six months to, to talk. I've attended their meetings, and I'm told after five minutes, it's time to leave. So I think you got to put some blame where blame belongs here. I have gone and knocked on the door of the chamber, and it's closed. I'm happy to talk to anybody. Every day I meet with people who want to talk to the council. But I have no other method other than what I'm using, and I'm doing it in good conscience and in good faith, and I'm putting that out to work. And blame the state for the state rules, because I don't make them.
Certainly don't blame you for them not being there, but I don't blame the state for them not being there. It's up to this council to ask them to be there to answer hard questions, and we're not.
Well, the defense of my seat and, well, as the city manager, we've stopped by at our drive-bys probably at least three times, and nobody's been there. So we have reached out at that component as well. So it's kind of hard, and I get it. They're open whenever a volunteer happens to be there. I can't run a business that way.
I understand, but I have no idea that conversation, we shouldn't because of the Brown Act. But again, that's the benefit of having public transparent conversation about these issues, these top-level issues. And again, we are not doing that. You both said, we drove by, we knocked, and they're closed. That's it. Well, we could- Well, we could ask them why right here, but we're not.
Yes, so let's go with the motion he has in there that you're going out with the modification of address in here, so it's not a mandate. I would like to see the verbiage that I lined with that. Would you take that as a modification of his motion?
Yes.
I said yes with bridge, so. And it's come back, to come back with this. We're coming back. Yes, Councilmember Ball?
Only comment I have is that last item is number six, the 24 financial audit is available. That might be timing-related, but we also heard from the city manager that he heard that the chamber is having trouble finding a CPA to deliver an audit. How do we resolve that?
Well, I'd have one comment against that. I don't, did we require a certified audit? Or did we just require an audit?
Usually it's an independent audit, but let me check.
Okay. Because if they're out looking for a certified audit, that's very difficult to get, and I'm very sensitive.
I think we actually provided money, did we not?
We gave them $3,500, which probably wouldn't buy a certified audit. So it could be there's some confusion there.
But yeah, it's an independent audit.
Independent financial audit annually to submit to the city with annual report. The financial will be a full audit the first year, every two years thereafter, and alternative years, the second and fourth, the financial shall be an accounting review.
So it's just an audit. It's not a certified audit.
Yeah.
Okay? We have the motion I modified with a giving them a second, so...
Can I ask one more question for clarity, please? Mr. Mayor Mosby had talked about six days, six hours. Is that part of the motion?
That, well, he's got it in there for six days, four hours in here.
Oh, six days, four hours.
So he's got that in his suggestion.
Okay. I haven't read through the whole thing.
So that's 24 hours a week, I think.
I don't want to leave you with the impression that I don't think anybody on this D S is I am glad on any particular element. We're asking staff to go back and help us get through this process where we have a contract that's focused on what we want, doesn't do things we can get others to do, and is executable. So if you come back and say, well, item three, we couldn't figure out how to do, I trust that you guys are going to make good effort.
Okay. I'm probably reaching out to you if that's all right. Councilmember Ball?
I'm just a little worried with staff interpreting number five. So again, can you reinforce maybe two or three things that are some sort of success criteria?
I have included a complete list of KPIs in the proposal that you have in front of you. I'm not locked on those specific ones, but I think it gets...
Are there two or three top-level ones that at least you could throw out there that are, you know, hey, we got to make sure we hit those and the rest are flexible? Or are they all flexible?
I can, well, none of them are inflexible. I can give you an example. One of the things that I suggest that they could do is to go get a list of the base contractors and establish a liaison with them. And the KPI would, KPI would be the number of contractors that they've successfully contacted, and I think I arbitrarily picked the number 10 or something. They were meant as a model for people to look at and say, I'm assuming the chamber will go, I can't do 10, how about eight? You know, so that's the flavor of the KPIs.
Can I ask a clarity question again? I'm sorry. I don't know what a KPI is.
A key performance indicator.
Thank you.
I'm on the base. We're full of acronyms.
Page seven of 12. On the top. Okay. There's a motion and a second.
Right. I need clarity. I know, Mr. Mosby, you had said something about adding additional requests. I have no idea what that was. Can you repeat it?
Yeah, it was about the metrics and the financials, that no money was going on until they had the audited, and likewise too, if you were to come back and see that it wasn't performing, that the, you weren't clawing the money back, it was actually money going forward. So if you saw it's not going, you're not feeding it. As in here, there's an example in here that you're allowed. If it's not happening, you go and make a request to give the money back. Here, if you see that it is not going, you're not continuing to give the money. As it says here in the, the breach may be cured by reasonable substitution of services provided by reimbursement of a portion of the fee being paid to the city or chamber, or other such remedy the city council may have reasonably incurred. This is where you're clawing money back. You're just not putting the money out if it's not happening. City Attorney, he follows me.
You're talking about Roma numeral four, failure to perform?
Yes.
That section, yeah?
Uh-huh. It is also mentioned in here in another spot, I forget where that one was. What was it?
Just so I'm clear, numeral, Roma numeral four, failure to perform, in the redlined version that staff provided, that's, thank you.
There's a motion and a, I know, I got the second. Let's go ahead and vote. And that passes four to one with Councilmember Ball voting no. Okay. Let's see, is it time to come back to number?
Six.
Number six, is it? Let's say. Immediately before the second oral communications. So we need to go through written, do we need written communications first before we go to the...
We have none.
We have no written communication? Okay, now, we got rid of that, so. Number six. Thank you. Matthew Adams. Accounting and Revenue Manager. Did you have anything to present on this, or just here for questions?
I'm just here for questions because it was pulled, so I'm here to answer whatever I can.
All right. This is the Lompoc Tourism Improvement District, annual report.
Oh.
The item you asked to...
To poll.
To poll.
Are we in public comment?
No, wait, go ahead and ask questions. Did you want to ask the first question, Councilmember Bridge?
Yeah, sure. I'll ask one question to get the ball rolling. Let me make them as statements and then you can... So I don't think the city has performed any audit.
We are not required to perform an audit, no.
Not only, whether you're required or not, we have not performed.
No, correct.
Well, we can ask for one, correct?
You can ask for one, correct.
Okay.
Just to clarify the answer to that question. You can ask for the city to perform an audit of Visit Lompoc, but you cannot direct Visit Lompoc to perform an audit. We don't have the authority to do that.
Okay. And we did request, as a result of the jury, the grand jury, I'm sorry, I had a senior moment there, we did request, is my understanding, for them, for Explorer Lompoc or VLI or whatever we're going to call them tonight, to perform an audit.
We didn't request one of it. They had mentioned in their meeting last year, maybe about this time, that they were working on one, but it wasn't requested a previous council.
We didn't, as a result of the grand jury, make an informal request that they perform an audit.
Correct.
I'd like to hear the lawyer say that.
No, that was presented to the city council as an option, but the council never asked, formally anyway, I don't know about outside of meeting, but the council did not ask. Visit Lompoc volunteered to do it, and I think that prevented the council from needing to ask. But Visit Lompoc volunteered to do the audit.
They volunteered, but we haven't seen it. That's affirmative. I don't think that Mike can hear your head shaking. What we're having today here is a request to modify the contract.
It's a staff recommendation to modify the contract.
Okay. And therefore, that implies to me that it's an opportunity for us to add other modifications.
Depending on what they are, if it's some very all-encompassing change or substantive change to the agreement, it might need to be brought back to a separate agenda item at a future meeting, just so the public has a chance to comment.
Well, I'll let you judge then. This has been a really controversial topic for some time. And there's implications that there's some kind of nefarious action going on in the financials. I'm not affirming that, I'm just saying that's the implication of what we've heard. And all of that can be solved by adequate financial reporting. So I would like to, perhaps, if I have council agreement, add four items to the contract. I'd like the report to include a balance sheet. I'd like the report to conclude a P and L or use of funds statement of their organizational structures, such as that. I'd like to see a list of all subcontractors and/or vendors receiving income from VLI on projects that the city is being used for, and the amount of the cost that was incurred. And I'd like to see a list of the nonprofit partners in the city and the amount expended in each of those partnerships. Now, I don't know if that's unreasonable, but I think if we actually got those reports, some would say we should have an audit. I don't know if I'm hung up on that, but we're getting a partial picture. For example, I read the report, and I can't tell how much money is sitting in the bank, and we keep hearing charges of there's a million dollars in, what's, what's the incorrect term, slush fund, sitting there. Why don't we just put all this to bed? Make this contract modification while we're doing a modification. Get the appropriate financials that we would expect from any organization that is dealing with that much money and be done with all of that. I'm not going to make a motion unless I feel like there's other issues that we need to add.
Well, let's spend a little time discussing it before we go to motions anyways. Councilmember, or, I'm sorry, city attorney.
I don't know if you want to get into the details of your request, but I do note that on page six and seven of the contract, sections 10.1 and 10.2, there are in there, they allow the city to request pretty much any kind of financial information, receipts, expenditures, all the vendors that they use and give money to. The city has the right to request that at any time from Visit Lompoc under the contract that's already in existence.
What I'm suggesting is it becomes a part of the mandatory annual report, that we don't have to go ask because we're all busy. And, you know, we don't, we'll forget, and then it'll get controversial again, and you'll tell me, well, you know, we could go ask for it. So I'm suggesting that we make this a mandatory part of the reporting requirements.
If I may say something to that, they have provided me their balance sheet and their profit and loss, P and L as you called it, they have provided it to me for the last two years. I use that when I reconcile to the report that is provided. I'm able to reconcile that down to the dollar, with the exception that was mentioned earlier that we did note in 2020 or 2019, there was one discrepancy that we weren't able to reconcile, but it was taken care of by Visit Lompoc after that was presented through the grand jury report.
That's excellent. And it should make it very easy for them to include that in the public report, that everybody can see, and it's not.
Well, in my understanding, they told us that they do provide their balance sheet and their income or profit and loss statements at their meetings to the public, anybody who goes can get one. They provide them to me to be able to do the reconciliation for the report, which Mr. Patel and I went back and forth to get this designed and set up the way that it is to hopefully make it make more sense.
I'm glad you like it that way. I don't.
The other thing is, my understanding is that this isn't a financial report, it's an annual report. They, the requirements for what is presented on an annual report is not the same as, or a program or performance report, is not the same as a financial report. That is why they have not included that in the past, but they do offer it at their meetings, is, again, my understanding.
I'll just make one more comment to that. This is a difference without a distinction. We have the public out there saying, we're not transparent. We have accusations flying all around, and you're standing in front of the room saying, well, I've got it all, I don't know why anybody's... Let's get it out there. Let's get a part of the report and be done with it.
Well, the statements that they've given me are only summarized. I don't have account line or, you know, itemized expenses. I just have, this is what they spent on advertising, which is also in your report.
Well, let's get the whole thing.
Say, yeah, that's what they provide me as it is.
Even though that information is not required by state law, Councilmember Bridge, we can make the requirement of the agreement. So I understand that's what you're asking, and that's fine.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm sorry, gentlemen.
All right. Well, I think, again, diving into this contract, I think that this would solve a lot of questions that's already asked here. Granted, you guys were staying up here at the 100,000-foot level, and I think what we've been looking at is to drill down a little bit, and it's, it's not, what he was asking was already in the contract allows it to be presented. And as in 10.1, it says, VLI shall maintain full and complete records of services performed under the screaming. Such records shall be opened to the inspection of the city and should be kept for a five-year period in case of an audit. So when it references the city, does that mean they become public documents when it's referencing the city?
Yes.
Okay. So that's one question. Next thing on 10.2, it said the records maintained by VLI shall include all receipts for expenditures incurred. City reserves the right for the city's economic director, assistant city administrator, is here designated to perform contract compliance audit. Now, you said you've done a 100,000-foot audit. I think what Councilmember Bridge was looking at is this drill-down aspect of all the records shall be open for inspection to the city and shall be kept. And I think this is all receipts. So I think, as it says here from 10.1 referencing to 10.2, all receipts and expenditures incurred. And I think that's, I get it, you didn't necessarily drill down, but I believe that that's what you're looking for, is at the five-year aspect of it as well, which would then be available to the people. This is kind of the way it's mentioned, is this not like the people's money as an aspect? Is it not? Yes. So it is kind of a, the quasi-tax aspect, and it is something for review of the people. And I think that's what has been asked in the past, and it was assumed that the audit was going to happen, it didn't happen. Not necessarily looking for the audit. In my case, I think it's very important at a transparency that we make sure we know what's going on, so that we don't vote on something we might ought to be out of compliance for, and we find out seven years from now that we shouldn't have voted on something. And I think it's important that we know and we see these things, whether we review them or not, and we go drill down through them. I think that you're asking for that to be asked for. And they've been saying that, hey, we'll give it to you if somebody asks for it. Before we go to a full audit aspect, we should probably review these things before even triggers an audit. An audit is like, oh, forensic audit, that sounds like somebody did something wrong. But I think what really has happened is, for the sake of transparency, we need to look at this. I didn't ask for it, and I was there for it, I'm sorry. City manager got upset about that one?
No, I just...
Sorry, I'm not asking...
I was confirming what you said, that's correct.
Yeah, I took it out. Sorry. Just kidding. Anyhow, I think that's what Councilmember Bridge is looking for on there. I believe, I do have some concerns as well in what's going on here. I don't believe that this was formulated for the group to accumulate such a large amount of revenue that's $980,948. That's a lot of money sitting there that was collected to do something, and I don't think it was collected for the prop, for... think it was collected for the, for, to sit in a money market account or wherever it might be. Everything I read in here didn't say, hey, build this huge war chest and the money sits there. Now, the complexity of that number is, if this group were to quit, and maybe the City Attorney can help you, the way I read it, if this, if we were to close it down, where would this money go? Where would this $980,000 go?
Well, if by "close it down" you mean dissolve the entire.
If it was dissolved entirely.
Dissolve the entire district.
Yes.
Then the money would need to be returned to the business owners that paid the T-Bid fees. If you're talking about just terminating the contract with Visit Lompoc.
I've got more questions coming, but that, so curiosity, there's $980,000 sitting here, if it got closed down, where would this go? It's not being utilized for what it's supposed to. There's a little snaggy loophole says that we've got this war chest, if it gets shut down, it goes back to the business owners, not the people who paid it and where it's collected from. Curious. So another question that we have in here, as clause 1.3 says, if the city were to terminate this agreement, expiration of the term without cause by giving 60-day notice, if that were exercised, where would that money go?
With some exceptions, I believe that I'd have to look at, the money would just continue being collected by the city, and the city would have the responsibility to perform all the services that are in the management district plan.
Right. So I'm not necessarily saying that we go this angle, but I'm saying there are things in this contract, and the reason why we have contracts is for us to read them and enforce them. And if we have questions, we need to drill down deeper. It is our responsibility up here to ask for this drill-down. We know staff's got a lot on their table, and they're going to go up here because that's where they are. But as I hear, I hear some questions from the public, et cetera, et cetera, I agree with Councilmember Bridge, but I think we need to enact 10.4 and 10.2, and going back five years and making these requests, to see all receipts and expenditures, and open for inspection by the city. I think when we saw that, I think that would solve a lot of this mikey muck that's out there. So I'm just not asking for anything greater than what's already in the contract. I would like to as well allow the amendment that was moving forward in here, that allowed the date, right, the date change for the compliance report, is that was what we're asking, and to accept and file the annual report.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Now, I didn't need to take two of a comment again, did I? City Attorney.
I would advise that in an abundance of caution, because this is such controversial item, why don't we just go ahead and take it?
All right, I'll do public comment one more time. Did any of you have questions for, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ball, do you have a question for staff?
Sure, maybe I can just, thank you. I'll just throw a few questions out there. And again, I heard from the public, I mean, there was a suggestion to, and I'll do my homework, to look up this, what San Luis Obispo T-Bid does and how they formulate it, and what information they supply. I think that's, you know, maybe find a couple of comparables if there's additional data. And I'm still, you know, I get the search for transparency, five years receipts, I don't have any problem with that. It sounds like a lot of this is already available, we just haven't asked for it. So if you want to ask for it, I don't have any problem with that. People's money, it's definitely the people's money, but not, again, for clarity, it's not Lompoc taxpayers, this is people staying in hotels. And then the only other thing that I wanted to put out there, and again, sorry to put you on the spot, sorry to put Christie on the spot, but I do remember when the grand jury report came out, and I do remember the city having a very strong, forceful response to a lot of the narrative. So I just wanted to maybe ask you, considering what you've either heard or what you'd like to reinforce, because you were point, you ran point on the response on that. The city wasn't in full agreement with the grand jury's findings, but maybe you can clarify or remind us, from your perspective, finance perspective, how this looks.
Okay. Yeah, actually, I'm happy to. The biggest thing that caused a lot of the problems and the confusion with the report was the, and this is what we determined, was the term carryover. And when most people think of carryover, they think of it in terms of accounting, which would be, this is how much we carry year to year. In the terms of this report, based on how the code was written, it was the streets code, I don't remember the whole name, and I apologize for that, it actually might be in here. But either way, it was.
Building and streets.
That's it, thank you. Due to how that was worded, the word "carryover" is meant to be just that years, in terms of financial, it would be a net profit, or net loss, or, you know, income, or gross profit. Anyhow, so that was the confusion that was being caused by that, was just that terminology. So when the grand jury and, when they looked at all the receipts and all the statements, they were coming up with numbers that weren't mathematically accurate. When we broke that down and then presented it in the grand jury report that you mentioned, we tried to explain that in a way that made sense to the public in a, you know, very base-level accounting method, to show that's what, that the carryover was just a net profit each year, and then to that, because of that, if you look at, or you don't have to, but if you were to look at the bottom of page six, or, I'm sorry, five of the report, we did ask them, and they started putting the cumulative answer, or cumulative number, for what their, what government calls fund balance, or owner's equity in business, that's their carryover year to year to year to year. That would be what was there prior, plus the carryover reported in their annual report. Does that answer the question?
I think so, I think so, thank you for that. And again, I'm open to, I'm open to whatever council decides to do. I think, again, the City Attorney will have to work overtime in figuring out what's actually applicable and what's reasonable for that type of contract. But again, I'm open to whatever works.
All right. Very good, okay, let me open up a public comment as per request.
Good evening again. So I'll just clarify that I have attended some of the meetings for Visit Lompoc. At one meeting, I requested financials, to which Atul Patel had said, you know, if I had come to him before coming to the, you know, city council, he would have provided them, but said that now that legal was involved, and they were getting attorneys involved, that he would not provide their financials. I did do a FOIA request through Visit Lompoc, and what they provided in that request for financials was an Excel document, no receipts, it's just whatever they put into the Excel document, there's no way to verify whether or not it's accurate. But even the numbers in that Excel document didn't add up to their expenditures in their annual reports. And there was huge gaps in what they spent, how they spent it. In some annual reports, it said, you know, $580,000 in marketing costs, but there was zero definition of where it went to, how it was broken down, who got that money. And so under the contract, you know, it talks about getting receipts, and so I requested, you know, can I get individual receipts, how this money was spent, so that I could add up and make sure, you know, that this is where the money's going, and that never happened. And then at that meeting with Visit Lompoc, they took a vote, they said that they were going to hire an independent audit, so that way there was complete transparency, they would provide it, you know, to the council, to the public. And that was well over a year ago, I think it's almost a year and a half, and that never happened. So, you know, transparency's not the word I would use with Visit Lompoc. And as far as the amendment goes, just looking at the language of the state code, it says any changes to the management plan has to first have a public hearing and proper notice. So I do think it would be premature to act on that without having that done first. Leave that to the City Attorney, but I think the, any amendments have to go through on that process, so.
Thank you. Anybody else have public comments? Okay, well, closed public comment. So an answer to the City Attorney on the hearing component?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, just to respond to a few of the legal issues that were raised. The public commenter is correct that to amend the management district plan, we have to hold a public hearing, but what we're amending tonight is the management agreement that we have with Visit Lompoc, which is different than the management district plan. We do have a management district plan, it sets out everything that the city is requiring, the funds to be used for that are collected, but that's a different document. The other item I already explained, which was the alleged inconsistency about who can direct an audit. The city council can ask the, can direct the staff to get all the information from Visit Lompoc, and then the city can do an audit of Visit Lompoc, or hire an independent auditor to do one. But the city doesn't have any authority to direct, demand Visit Lompoc to do an audit. We can ask them, but we cannot demand that they do it. And finally, there was some discussion about whether generally accepted accounting practices have to be followed by Visit Lompoc. It is a requirement of the management agreement that Visit Lompoc has to use generally accepted accounting principles in their maintenance of their records, in their financial records, receipts, and expenditures. But as far as the annual report, under the Streets and Highways Code that's before you for approval tonight, that only needs to comply with the state law requirements for that annual report, under the T-Bid law. That does not have to comply with generally accepted accounting principles. So the annual report that is before you tonight is fully in compliance with the T-Bid state law, and staff does recommend that you accept that and approve that tonight.
Okay, did you have a question for?
I did. Councilmember Bridge. I keep hearing the statement that we don't have the right to request an audit, which I accept.
We have the right to request it, but we don't have the right to demand, like mandate, that Visit Lompoc perform it on.
That's legal answer. We do have the right, if we modify the contract, to require anything we want, right?
That is correct, yes.
And they have the right to not sign it. So I would like to make a motion to move on with this, to accept the staff recommendation, but with the addition of exercising section 10, meaning 10.1 and 10.2, and that is the records being open for inspection, all receipts and expenditures on that aspect of it.
You're asking for staff to get those records from Visit Lompoc for the last five years? That's what you're asking for?
And that is my motion. Do I need?
Well, I'll give you a.
Let me, there's my motion button, there we go.
I'll give you a second for discussion. What is the intent, so the staff goes and gets it, for example, we've already heard, the staff has gone and gotten some information. What is your intent for distributing that in a way that the public doesn't have to go do a FOIA? Is there, is there some intent here?
Well, you'd have to make a records request to see this, correct?
Yeah, if the, if the city used this provision of the contract and demanded Visit Lompoc to give the city all those records, then the city would have them. Council members could ask staff for them to see them, and any member of the public could make a request to the city to get those records.
Okay.
Well, that certainly is going to satisfy the itch, but I think we're going to be scratching that itch again next year, so I'll go along with it for, you know, expediency, but in the long term, I think the best answer is to get these things delivered with the annual report, but you've got my second.
All right, let's, let's see where we go from here. All right, moved and seconded, let's go ahead. And that passes 5-0, okay. What do we got up next? Last two minutes, oral communications. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak? The last two minutes of oral communications. Waited all night. Two minutes.
Two minutes? Oh, I made it three. All right, I'll try and agree. My name is Shawna Stellwell, and I'm a resident of.
Let me just, the microphone's a little bit at a distance so we can hear you.
My name is Shawna Stellwell, and I'm a resident of Lompoc, speaking tonight just not as an advocate, but as a neighbor, and as someone who believes we owe each other more than silence when our community is hurting. On July 10th, just hours before their emergency meeting, Carpinteria was hit hard. Ice raids swept through agricultural fields, places where people worked long hours in the sun to support their families and fuel local economies. Workers were detained in front of their coworkers and friends. A man was killed as a result of his injuries fleeing fascist-mast ice stations. A professor from Cal State Channel Islands was one of the innocents kidnapped. Families were left without answers. That same evening, the Carpinteria City Council had an emergency session. They passed a formal proclamation reaffirming their commitment to the California Values Act and allocated immediate emergency funding to help those impacted. No delay, no excuses, they acted because when your community is in crisis, you don't wait to do the right thing. Lompoc is not removed from this reality. We share the same agricultural industry, we rely on many of the same essential workers, people who labor in our fields, on our farms, and in our cannabis operations. They are part of the heartbeat of this city, and when fear enters their lives, it enters all of ours, because this isn't about policy, it's about people. It's about the child who doesn't understand why her father didn't come home from work. It's about the mom who's afraid to take her kid to the doctor. It's about what kind of community we are when it really counts. So I'm asking you tonight to take three compassionate, concrete steps. First, issue a public statement affirming Lompoc's commitment to the California Values Act and make clear that our city will not participate in unauthorized federal immigration enforcement, including the cooperation on any level with law enforcement. Second, adopt a proclamation recognizing the real and present harm caused by these raids and commit to protecting every resident's right to access city services without fear. Third, and most critically, allocate no less than 2.5% of our budget.
Thank you. Anybody else, last two minutes, come on. You're good.
My name is Martin Kraus. I have a few Indivisible events coming up this month that I'd like to let the people know about. The first one is Thursday at Centennial Park, where you're going to honor the late great congressman and civil rights champion, John Lewis. Please bring a food donation for the Lompoc Food Pantry from 5:00 to 6:00, and then join us for a candlelight vigil and moment of silence, followed by a peaceful march to here, City Hall. It's a great chance to hear what's going on in your city and the nation you live in. Starting this Friday through August 8th, the farmer's market starts, and Indivisible will have a booth there every week if you would like to hear more. And on Saturday, July 26th, at the library's Grossman Gallery at 3:00 p.m., Indivisible will have their monthly membership meeting. Always for more info, indivisablompoc.org. And don't forget, this weekend is the library book sale. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else, last two minutes of oral communications? All right, see, nobody else, we will close, the last, to bring it back to council for council comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Ball.
So I was a little distracted over the last few weeks. My only announcement that I'll make is I welcomed a, my wife actually did most of the work, make sure I get that right, but we welcomed a baby girl on July 4th. Supposed to come a little bit later, but showed up early for the fireworks, so, her name is Bella Quinn Ball, and we're so excited for her to eventually run for office here in Lompoc 30 years from now, I'm kidding, but we're very excited, and thank you to the city staff that's been so kind and complimentary. She's beautiful, by the way.
Congrats. Councilmember Vega.
Nothing really to report, but I'd like to mention something. We have a written motion that comes up, it's kind of silent, maybe we can formalize a motion earlier. Kind of threw me off guard here to see a written motion on the screen, but never formalized on the computer, so that I can know that it was actually accepted, and maybe save a little time, but thank you, and I wish everybody well, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilmember Bridge.
I had wanted to close a couple items on the upcoming agenda item. With Mr. Councilmember Ball's agreement, I'd like to close the old theater ad hoc committee. I think we served the purpose, we broke it free. If we need to re-initiate it, we can, so it's, it's listed on item nine on the upcoming... You're looking at me like I'm nuts, so.
No, go ahead, carry on.
I'd just like to take it off the list, it's done, and get this list cleaned up a little bit. I think the last item on this upcoming, the needs analysis report for the discharge tent, I think we've been briefed that that issue went away, that the state accepted the fact that the river water, or the creek water coming in was above the temperature of what we were just charging, so unless I'm mistaken, I think that one's gone away. So just to get some things off there.
As long as the other council members-
Concur, okay.
I think, I think actually it's still up, I think at the last-
Okay.
Utility commission meeting, I believe it was still on discussion.
Okay. How about the ad hoc one? You guys good with taking that off?
Which one?
The ad hoc theater one?
Well, I think that can roll off, I imagine.
I don't, you did a lot of work on that, thank you for that. Again, if we need to stand it back up because there's issues-
I think we got three, yeah.
You got three head nods? You need three head nods for that? Okay, I'll give you a head nod.
You still think the needs analysis report is required?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then let's get a date on it, one, it's going to come here so we can get it killed. I lost my train of thought there, I apologize.
I think, I think the review of building process was actually done at the utility commission meeting, I don't know if that presentation was coming here?
I believe it's on an upcoming agenda, it was presented at utility commission, and then I believe it's coming in August.
Okay.
You let Mr. Kraus go home early tonight, didn't you?
I did.
That one's coming soon.
I'll stand corrected on that one then, and I don't know what the wording should be, but we have that open LAFCO issue, and I talked to a rep of the LAFCO group, and the indication was we could get this thing through if we pushed it in, so is there an open item on here somewhere for that, or did I lose the bubble? Do we know what we're talking about?
Can you give us a quick response about the LAFCO thing and the budget aspect, why it's not on a council request item? Anybody?
We could put it on the council request item. I know I met with the county and asked that question, and what we're holding up, they're doing a follow-up, they're still saying it's part of the EIR, but I'll turn it over to Mario or the staff there if they have more to add to it.
Okay. I also talked to a county person, and the thing they say is holding up is they don't think we're going to agree with the RENA numbers. That seems like a-
Maybe you could give it to me later and tell me who you spoke to, because I was talking to-
Maybe, maybe you could do-
I was talking to the assistant CEO.
So we don't get into discussing this as an agenda, discuss with staff and see if we need to direct it?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I just think it should be on here if we're going to, on the upcoming. So the only other item, well, I have a, I will not be here the August mid-meeting, however I obtained permission not to be here, I have a granddaughter's wedding, so, and then in the, in the budget item, which the schedule you put up there, the concierge and economic development group was promised to come back when we had more time to think about it.
I believe they're part of the goals and objectives, they were in there, we could respond in that, or we could do a separate item, that's up to you, your counsel.
Well, let's see the goals and objectives, then we'll see if it's in there or not adequately, and if not, then I'll bring it back. How's that?
Yeah, it was in there requesting that, yeah. We'll, we'll get a response for you.
Okay. And then my last item is, do we know when we'll get the year-end closing? Is there a date certain on that yet?
Our audit is scheduled for October 20th through 31st, and then after, after the audit, we put together the ACFA. So the deadline for the ACFA is December 31st, and that is what we, we are aiming to have it done before the holidays, but we have until December 31st, and expect that to be, to be met. We usually do our presentation in February with our auditors.
Okay, and that's for, through June 30th of this year?
That's correct.
Okay. I feel like I had heard something to the effect that we couldn't get things like cash reports and stuff until you finish the calendar year stuff. Is that, did I mishear that? I probably did.
So we are, we are working on our cash reports, those are, I believe we're currently at February, we were having some, have had some staff vacancies, and so those are behind, but we are catching those up, and they will be done in time for the audit, and, and we will be providing those reports as they are completed.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I believe you guys were giving some drafts, so we were able to make decisions on the budget, correct?
Correct.
It was May's draft.
Right, so we were able to give you preliminary drafts on, on those numbers, they're just, they haven't had some of the closing-
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bridge, did you say August 19th, the second meeting of August, you will be absent?
I'm sorry?
August 19th, the second meeting of August, is that the meeting you're absent?
I might be back by the 19th, but the wedding's on the 14th, and I'm going to Colorado, so I just want to give a heads up, I-
It's a long walk.
Yeah, it's a long walk, but I'll, I'll give you a break or-
I just want to make sure I have it right.
Yeah, I'll find out what the plate is and let you know.
Okay, I attended the SB CAG subregional meeting, lengthy discussion about the last mile fiber connection, et cetera, et cetera. Nothing was formalized, but moving forward with something that's already got a lot of alternatives out there anyways. I just wanted to report as well that the Caltrans, and I think that document, granted we don't have a date of closure yet, but the left turn closure at San Lucia Canyon Road on Highway 1 is happening tentatively late July, early August. The closure's anticipated to complete within one workday. Emergency vehicles and stuff will still be allowed to drive over some bollards, I guess they said, or we have to have mandated evacuation, we can still get out there. It will be approximately three and a half, 3.5 additional miles, which equates to approximately five additional minutes to make the right turn and drive through the village and flip around, so that is their solution for reducing vehicle miles traveled for us people in our area. The other thing that I wanted to reach out to, and I've been advised that there's a lot of bulky items that are being left in alleyways, and et cetera, et cetera, the city of Lompoc does have this fancy handout out there on how to get your two bulky items picked up three times a year at no additional charge. Guess there's mattresses, I saw some photos today of a washing machine and a mattress in somebody's front yard, and you guys make the call, get the appointment, get these things out of there, and help your neighbor out if it needs and such, but it's out there, so. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Are we good? You already run? Adjourn the meeting till 6:30, August 5th, 2025.